I want to touch briefly on the email sent to the entire council and staff yesterday from 45-year Cave Creek resident Gary Rector pertaining to his concerns regarding this upcoming fire season as a result of the wet fall season and the fact that we now have, as in the last seven, five to seven years, a major game changer we're all familiar with, globe chamomile. When I ran for my seat on this council, it was a major topic for me that I ran on. I did not think enough was being done to make our town safer. We cannot have another fire season like 2020 when 12 homes burnt down. As Gary and I discussed on the phone yesterday, this is about health and safety, not to mention just common sense for Cave Creek. Education is great and should continue, but unfortunately, it is not enough in our town, in our now very complacent society we currently live in. Gary's email has resparked my energy to make Cave Creek a much safer community as well. If we took the appropriate measures, we could all see our insurance go down, premiums, that is. In closing, I sincerely hope Mayor Morris and Town Manager Grady Miller will either set up an e-session or put this topic on a future agenda soon to be discussed in detail and possibly set the stage to enact an ordinance to ensure Cave Creek's health and safety. Thank you.
Okay. As you all know, we can't discuss these things due to law, but yeah, it's been a wet winter. Other public announcements? Okay, call the public.
Gary Rector.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. So yeah, I have lived here, I'm Gary Rector, I've lived here for 45 years since before incorporation. And so I just want to alert everyone in town to the extreme fire danger that's presented by this noxious weed, this globe chamomile, that's really growing like crazy right now. And thank goodness, I don't live in an HOA that can tell me how to trim my bushes, I don't live in Carefree that can tell me what color to paint my house. But, okay, every government is really charged with the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. And so with respect to this weed, the town, I think, should take positive action to mitigate the risk and not merely rely on complaints from neighbors. For example, if I were to put in a 300-gallon diesel fuel tank, the town would rightfully be concerned and would expect some, some action and permitting and so on, on my part. This is no different, this weed is no different from that, it presents the same kind of fire danger. And so I think we can probably afford at least a part-time fire marshal to patrol and objectively note any problems without requiring people to tattle on their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
Okay, Town Manager report.
Mayor, Council, for the interest of time tonight, I don't have any reports.
Okay, we have a presentation tonight from the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee, and so they're updating us on their work, including reports from the committee's working groups on evaluating the possible purchase of 4,005 acres of state trust land to the west of A key initiative for the town.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, I too will be brief. Before you getting ready to sit down as the Chairman of the Ad Hoc Open Space Committee, Vice Chairman of that committee, and a committee member, as you're aware, as council is aware and the public, the town just agreed to terms with the Arizona State Land Department to extend the current annexation agreements an additional 10 years, so now they're, they're set to expire in June of 2039. In September, the town council appointed 15 members to serve on this committee. This committee has met three times. The committee also formed several smaller working groups, which the presenters will go into in more detail, and they've gotten to a point now where they want to give you a status and an update on the work they've done thus far and the next steps to preparing a final report to bring back to council at some point in the future. With that, I'll turn it over to Chairman of the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee Task Force, Mr. Steve Lamarr.
May I interrupt just a second? Would the members of the committee please stand up? So we, we, oh, okay, great, thank you. It's really nice to have you all here, thank you. We hear good things about your work, so. Okay, committee, Steve, you're up.
Coming up on the holidays, I know you, nothing you like more than another meeting, but I think this one will make you happy. I hope you did get your materials, we have a PowerPoint, and I'm sure you all got your lanyards, correct? Oh, good. Now we're, now we're all in this together, so, of course, we always have been. Let me just first give a little intro on how we got here, what we've been doing, what we've done step by step, actually. In our first meeting, we worked on the scope of our work and the creation of three work groups, so that we can divide up our large group into small groups and have them work independently on, on three subjects. First subject was the information outreach group, the second was the finance and stakeholder group, and the third was the land open space evaluation prioritization group. And we understand that all of those have synergy with each other, and the success of one aspect obviously plays on the others, but that way we, we broke up, we committed to have the work groups communicate and work in a small group on their area, and then once a month, we'd meet together, and then we'd all discuss what we'd done, an update internally, and then discuss and evaluate issues and kick things around, so we were all on the same page. I want to say a couple things that I'm probably going to embarrass some people. First, I mean, all, I was shocked, and I've been around a while, since 86, and we worked on with a lot of committees, and from the, from the first meeting, it was clear that everybody was really engaged. And I guess I was happy because it was, they elected me chairman when I didn't even ask to be nominated, but aside from, aside from being a little biased, seriously, I got the, I got the feeling that everybody really cared, they weren't just here to fill the seat. And I think that's really important, and I hope it shows in the materials you've got and the work we've done in a short period of time. But there, having said that generally, there's three, actually, three members that I want to really shine a light on here in public. One is sitting right here next to me, Stacy Daniel, and the other one is sitting right here next to me, Bill Bresser, and the third is sitting right behind me, Kathleen Abreu. They literally put together all of our discussions, our notes, the maps, input from staff, the graphics, and by the way, this young lady has probably donated $20,000 to $25,000 worth of free graphic work so far. So I hope, again, we trust and we hope that our work lets you know that we've taken your charge seriously, and we think this is an important issue for the town. And I want to tell you that Grady, Luke, and Bambi, they've just been wonderful to work with. Grady has kept us behind our skis, kept us focused, demanded that we, you know, when we get a little rambunctious and want to, what do we, let's cut some deals, you know, he's right there to tell us, whoa, this is, we're here to recommend, we're here to gather information, we're here to have ideas, and the, the work of making hard decisions is going to be up to you. Those are the obvious staff, but there's one young man I want to put a light on, and that's Eric Baker of the Planning Department. He created all the maps that are in your materials that you're going to see, and boy, those really put it together, they give you something to look at so you can see the connectivity and you can see the park and the, and Spurcross, and he just did a wonderful job, so I want to point that out. And now we'll get to the real work, and that is, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy, she's going to start with the Outreach Committee and take it away.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here. Having such a large group of 15 people after our first meeting, when our work group, the Communication and Outreach, got together, we decided that we need to have some unifying factor, and what better way, which I can use my talents, is to create an identity for this group, and therefore, this is the logo that we came up with, that represents our goal and our mission of the 4,005 acre, it's a network. We've got the mountains, we've got the creek, Suaro, our name along with conservation and recreation and identity. And so we created this, made the lanyards like you have, and as in, name ID tags, so we wear them proudly to our, to our work sessions in our ad hoc group. It makes us feel united and as a whole. So with that, let's see here. The group that I was associated with, Communication and Outreach, our objective is to focus efforts on preparing any general information and education-related materials pertaining to the acquisition and protection of open space. The assignments that we decided to task ourselves with was to come up with a logo and a tagline, design and produce a logo reflective of this campaign, because it is a campaign. We talked about FORCE, anticipating partnering with the existing 501(c)(3) account for donations that I believe was created a while back for Spurcross Ranch Conservation Area. We talked about a website and discussed different URL possibilities and setup. The content should greatly enhance printed materials. The marketing materials, design and layout of various campaign concept pieces were created. To do a seamless transition, we need to utilize QR codes and clickable links whenever possible to navigate back to the website where there'd be more of a wealth and breadth of information. The parcel maps that were created, we needed to understand the network of parcels and begin the process of being able to explain in detail how and when, pieced together alongside land owned by the town, Desert Foothills Land Trust, Cave Creek Regional Park, and Spurcross Ranch Conservation Area in Maricopa County, how they would all create an abundant wilderness region for conservation and recreation, and why everybody will benefit. We got a fabulous visual tour, thank you to Luke and Bambi, to get firsthand knowledge of the parcels and take notice of their different features. And along with this, we want to tie in possibly with a Facebook group that would support community interaction and education, get a groundswell going. We decided that a survey might be useful and create a free questionnaire with SurveyMonkey. Annie, who was on, on our committee, started that, and it could be printed, distributed, we could have a QR code, so it could be done online, find out if, how people rank with various questions, the importance of open space, and how, there are just a myriad of questions we could go into about that. Talked about having something similar to like the Friends of the Desert Foothills Library, we'd have Friends of the 4005, discuss about initiating a group of volunteers that would help foster the campaign. Identify local influencers. We tried to start a list of people we thought in the Cave Creek community who could be asked to help personalize the promotion of acquiring the 4,005 acres of open space. We would be using photography and personal sentiments that would appear online and in printed materials. Community outreach, we'd first focus on neighborhoods that are adjacent to open space parcels for in-home presentations, then expand outward to larger groups in the community. We could use Town Hall, Hall and Center, Desert Foothills Library. We would include maps, posters, and appropriate marketing material handouts. We could do special events, we talked about local businesses and opportunities. Perhaps Sonoran Arts League would think about doing an Art for Acres special event under benefit Carol was talking about, that could be really fun for everybody. Promotional merchandise, identify items that could be used for advertising and retail that could include magnetic bumper stickers, static window cling stickers, silk screen t-shirts, hats, cups, coasters, kitsch giveaways. And then there's premiums with the appropriate dollar donation, there was talk about considering promotion of naming rights for these parcels, or names on entry monuments, that would be on the higher-end dollar donation. And public relations, there's press releases. We discovered that PBS nonprofit commercials are very inexpensive, and they, they put it all together for free. We could do articles and advertising in regional publications. So with that, we decided we needed to have another identity, a logo for this campaign, and this is what that you see on the screen was created. It plays off directly from the Ad Hoc Committee logo for continuity. There's emphasis placed on the acquiring the 4,005 acres of open space, we're highlighting conservation and recreation. The abstract rectangles at the top visually imply the network of parcels that are not totally connected. Images of the mountain creek Suaro directly relate to the town of Cave Creek. The tagline highlights specific focus of our goal, which Steve helped create with protecting the great Sonoran foothills forever. And of course, Cave Creek, Arizona is identified. Concept marketing materials can include brochures, booklets, rack brochures, rack cards, large posters, flyers, direct mail reply, envelopes, remit envelopes, surveys, each can be targeted to a different audience that would include residents and general public, CPA and financial planner referrals, estate planners, business affiliates, partnerships, corporate sponsorships. And within these materials, we would highlight the benefits and facts, being that number one amenity is open space, that what ma, it's what makes Cave Creek unique, it also brings in tourist and tax dollars. The tourism, open space brings that throughout the year, sorry, that's a duplicate. There is increased property value, open space is a sought-after resource as future development gets closer to town. There's a population and development boom with the microchip plants, a huge housing and commercial boom is projected. As neighboring open space decreases, the open space in our municipality will become an increasing valued asset. There's an abundance of horse property here in town, there's always been the desire for horse owners to be able to saddle up on your property and go out and use the trails. We want to protect the Sonoran foothills vistas, keep our Suaro-filled hillsides as pristine vistas, vista corridors. We want to balance and manage our development, our boundaries are getting hemmed in, let the town maintain control. Protect our water supply, with unplanned outside development, water, underground water levels could become extremely low, if not worse. There's key locations, invite New River and Anthem to join as a partner, as they might benefit with a connecting neighborhood park. Protection of wild animals and wilderness guarantees a land bridge for animal roaming in territory. There's trail connectivity, trails will be able to connect from Cave Creek Regional Park to the White Tank Mountains. There's conservation ensures wilderness and wildlife will remain available for generations. Recreation, the enjoyment of non-vehicular travel via horseback, hiking and off-road mountain biking, all in nature. Of course, the dark night sky, dark skies are crucial for wild animals and a sought-after amenity for residents. And last but least, overall mental and physical health, we know that studies demonstrate how spending time in nature can improve mood, lower anxiety, and improve cognition and memory.
Do it over.
Oh, we're going to play musicals.
Yeah.
You can organize 15 people, but I don't know about three in a day, give us a second.
Sure we all know him, this is Vice Chairman Bill Bresser.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of the council, you continue to show up, and I am so appreciative of that, I really am, and for giving us this opportunity to come in front of you. And I've got to say that the one slide from Stacy that I hope you really picked up on was all of the materials she's created, because all of that sans body copy is ready to go. And the reason it was so important for Stacy to go first here is to show you that we are really prepared to conduct the campaign. We're not going to come here and say, hey, guys, let's have a bake sale and somehow mysteriously raise $16 million doing that. This is going to take a campaign. Now, my first option for financing this was to go to Taiwan Semiconductor Manufacturing Corporation and ask them to cut us a check. They have not returned my calls, so that one's probably not going to happen. So the, the financing stakeholders work group basically had to set out and figure out how we were going to try and raise $16 million, other than talking to Taiwan Semiconductor. So we were looking at where we start, and by mid-year, next year, which is the first feasible date that anything could happen, in the town's open space account, there will be about $2.5 million. The 501(c)(3) currently has approximately $140,000 in it, so right now, that would put us at about 13.6 against the $16 million goal. An important consideration here is that if we can partner with Maricopa County and get them to come in to this project, that can make a significant difference. Spurcross was about $21 million, and it was the state, the county, and Cave Creek that split that. So this is a little smaller step, and 21 million back then is, was more money than 21 million today. So we have shown in the past that we can accomplish this thing, so I want you to have confidence that we can get this done. And let's see if I can figure out how to drive this. Okay. Did I go one slide or two here?
You can go back two.
Okay. Basically, one of our primary options here, I'm going to see if I can go back, I think I may have jumped a slide here, nope, okay. One of our options is a secondary property tax. A secondary property tax is unique to the state of Arizona, and that is a sunsetting tax, that is, at the point that whatever it is we bought with that tax is paid for, the tax goes away. That is the type of tax that was used when Spurcross was acquired, and we paid it off ahead of schedule. However, it has to go on a ballot, it has to be passed, and it has the words property and tax in it when it's on the ballot, and the last property tax in the area that got voted on was Carefree, and it went down by an 80/20 margin. Now, that was not a secondary property tax, but I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that property taxes are a delicate issue. This property tax has to occur in an even-numbered year, it has to be when we have a general election or primary election, and the call for the election has to happen 180 days in advance, meaning Thursday, May 7th. So what that means is that if we want to put that on the ballot, we have on that date to have that submitted, and Bill, please fill me in if I've got any of my dates or times wrong. So we need to be thinking about this, no matter what, if we choose other sources, we need to be thinking that this is an important deadline here. Then, 148 days in advance of the general election, Monday, June 8th, is the day we have to have the language for the ballot submitted. Now, that is also the last day we can say, guys, we changed our mind, we don't want to put that on the ballot. So we can do that as late as June 8th, so we have a little bit of time to work with. At the moment, we have a willing seller, the Arizona State Land Department would really like to see us knock this down. They actually have an agreement with us that says we're going to take 160 acres in the next five years, and, which we could do with the cash on hand. However, we have an obvious, clear, and present danger to this area and to this open space in the form of an entirely new city that is being built on our border. And I want to point out, that facility over, that development over, that city is closer to Cave Creek than the western corner of Cave Creek is to the eastern corner of Cave Creek. It's closer than you may think. So
Name this.
Well, it's HALO, actually, is I think what they're using for a term for it now, but I'm talking about the Taiwan Semiconductor and everything that's associated with that. You guys are probably familiar about the Costco and the car dealerships, and all you have to do is drive down I-17 and you can see the future, it's pretty clear. So there is more pressure on this land for development, and some people have told us, oh my gosh, you know, they couldn't develop that, that's too hilly. Well, we went and looked at Willow Springs Wash, and everybody's, oh yeah, we couldn't develop that, and then we drove around to behind Cave Creek, that is, to the east, which is in the county, and discovered, oh yeah, you can develop it, they're doing it right now, they're slicing and dicing, they, they make really big bulldozers these days, it's amazing. So this is not inherently safe from development. We also have seen the state overriding the zoning in Scottsdale. We have seen a committee that's supposed to support conservation and preservation who's saying that they want to eliminate the conservation districts by making the holder of the conservation district responsible for the taxes on the property and the elimination of noxious weeds, which would destroy that. So there is a lot of pressure on this kind of land, so I don't think that we can look at this and say that it is inherently safe. So I'm just trying to tell you the, the sense of urgency that I get, and I've also seen that, you know, Phoenix is prepared to build, to bid $12 million for 159 acres over there across the road for a park with one trail in it, $12 million. I wish they'd just give us the $12 million. So our strategy for raising this money, I describe it as all of the above, and it works kind of like a layer cake, and the first layer is private donations. And what we have right now is a 501(c)(3) trust called FORCE, which is Friends of Recreation, Conservation, and Environment, I believe. And it's set up, it was originally set up for the purpose of, of acquiring this land about maybe 20 years ago, and it needs to be updated, very badly, the memorandum of understanding, and this is a task that the committee can't do. This is a task we have to ask the council and staff to do, and it's, that is essential that we get that open, and to that end, I brought a check, $4,005. Okay, I'd like to give someone this check, so I'm asking you to help me to part, if you know how tight I am, you know that this is not an insignificant thing here, so help me get this started. There are two issues that are critical before we can accept these donations. We have to very carefully describe what the funds are going to be used to the donors. This has been beaten into me by everyone who knows how this kind of thing works, and so this is boilerplate, which, again, the committee cannot write this, we, we're not attorneys, so we need help with that. We also need the town staff prepared to document the donations and provide IRS letters to the donors. These things must be done before you can take my These things must be done before you can take my money. So, you know, when we first brought this up some time ago in the council, I think everybody, when you said raising private funds, there was a lot of skepticism about that. And so I think you've seen the kind of marketing materials that Stacy can generate, but I want to tell you how we would use that and why this is not a bake sale-oriented funny money, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, money-raising project. First of all, since Spurcross, the tax code has changed dramatically, and there are massive differences that induce people to donate money to this type of thing. The first one has to do with fully appreciated securities. And I don't know where you're hiding, but Mr. Carbone, wherever you are, brought this to my attention. And this turns out to be an extremely powerful thing, because it lets people who have invested in the market, which you might have noticed is at all-time highs right now, to donate those stocks to this purpose without having to pay capital gains tax on it. It's good for them. They get a massive tax deduction. It's good for us. This table kind of illustrates an example here. What we do with that is we don't have to directly find these wealthy people. What we do is we go to their CPAs, tax advisors, every financial advisor they have, and just tell them that we have such an opportunity. You know, they will do a lot of the work for us, because there are people who actively look for that tax deduction. The sad part is, today is December 2, and we have a hard deadline at December 31. I think, I don't know what we can do to get in front of that tax deadline, but if there were any way to achieve that, it would benefit all of us. Direct solicitations. Chances are, most of you have had at least a couple emails, maybe from the museum, maybe from Dark Sky, saying in your year-end giving, please remember to see us. Well, you know what? Cave Creek's got a lot of merchants with a lot of email lists. If we harness those email lists, and even if we just took the artists that participate in Hidden in the Hills, we can make a massive drive for direct solicitation here. You know, there are a lot of people here that actually like to walk out and see those mountains looking just like they do. We need to work with the outreach group to do this. This is a campaign. So what happens is that we're going to work with outreach and say, I need a brochure that is targeted towards financial planners. And amazingly enough, we have the talent and the skill, and fortunately, still the willingness to do the work. Please never quit. And so we have the tools that we need. Now, we've had a few ideas here, and some of this is spelled out in some of the materials that you have. But I think it's kind of a nice way to look at this, because it kind of gives you an idea of where we could go with this. One of them is the 4,005 Heroes with $4,005 to protect 4,005 acres. Hence this. So it's a pretty simple way to understand it. And one of the reasons for that is that many years ago, there was an incorrect valuation of the property, where they told people it was only $437 an acre. And I've been told that they lined up around Town Hall with checks. I just want them to add a zero. Okay, that's all we need. So I think we do have a pretty strong way to do that. Then, the other donation levels, they're... It's kind of like when you're in the restaurant, and they push that tablet over, and they give you the four choices for the tip. I kind of like these choices better. And Bill, we'll see you for one of the big ones down at the bottom there. So we also, and we touched on this, and this may or not be popular, but we have 12 parcels to work with. What if there's a family that wants to buy a parcel and call it Bobcat or something? I don't know. We'd have to think through that very clearly, but you couldn't rename Spurcross. But this, we have a possibility with that. We missed an opportunity by missing Hidden in the Hills. You know, what a wonderful target market came and visited all of those artists. We have, in the committee, people who are closely associated with Hidden in the Hills, and I think we can still work with that group. We had the right demographic here to solicit donations. And there needs to be what I call bake sale-level events. And we don't enter into those events with the idea that we're going to raise a lot of money. What we're going to do is we're going to raise a lot of community involvement. We're going to gain support for this. So in looking how this stuff adds up, those kinds of donations are very important. And a couple of my committee members have told me that they think they can raise all the money that way. And I've told them they have my permission. The next group we have is government, and here Desert Foothills Land Trust has agreed to help us. There are sources of federal government money, federal grants, that are only available to communities. So Desert Foothills Land Trust, which is not a community, has never been eligible for that. But they know the process. They know how to write the grant, and they will help us with that. Corporate is interesting, because another change that's happened is a thing called Environmental, Social, and Governance, ESG. Now, investment-grade companies are rated additionally in what kind of a citizen they are. So we have a great many companies in the valley where the headquarters are here, and we can help them find a way to meet their ESG requirements. So, but we have to be able to get in front of them. Benevolent funding. There are a number of trusts and charities and other opportunities. There are bequeathments. There are people who are willing to say, you know, I might need the money while I'm still alive, but after I'm dead, I'd give you what's left over, or some part of it. And those are all sources that we can work with to try and raise this money. I think this may be one of the more important things right here. Maricopa County certainly says they want at least one parcel, and they're very anxious to do that. They could do... And this is important that they have to work with us. They can't call for the auction on that property that they want to buy from the land department, because we have first right. So they have to partner with us in order to have a chance to do it. And the parcels we're talking about surround the park. So we also have Arizona State Parks. Actually, the Arizona State money, that is Arizona's funds for this kind of land, is actually all administered by Arizona State Parks. So we'll have to try and go to them. I have been told that that will be uphill sledding. So, but we haven't explored it at this point. Okay, so those are the primary ways to get free money. After that, we start looking at a little bit more of a challenge. And the first step here is municipal financing. We don't necessarily have to do a property tax to raise the money. The town itself can borrow money. It can use the land we're trying to acquire as the collateral. If there is $500,000 a year in the budget that is dedicated towards open space, well, guess what? Let's use that to borrow the money to buy some of this. Now, the bad news is, it won't buy all of it. So we still need to raise money privately. So an estimate here, and again, thank you to members of my working group, $5 million for 20 years starts out at $396,000 and declines to $259,000. So that will give you a ballpark of about what your money can buy if we chose to use that as one of the layers of this layer cake of financing. Now, the good news here is that decision can be made by the council. You don't require a vote of the people to do that. And I suggest that you kind of look at that option as getting us over the goal line. That's not the baseline. I would not start out with that. That would be what you do when we've more or less exhausted the other options. Okay, the secondary property tax election. If we go with a secondary property tax, it is not as bad as it might seem. Now, I would like to get maybe a hard and fast example. The math for this actually came from our mayor, so if you disagree with it, see him after the meeting. But basically, if we started out looking for about $13 million, you might remember in the earlier discussion where we were at with that. And if we have roughly 4,000 properties in the town, you'd be looking at $227.50 a year for the average property. The interesting thing is, we have some extraordinarily above-average properties in Cave Creek. So this would be an opportunity, maybe for some of those properties, to really return something to the town. We cannot, as a committee, and so as a member of the committee, I cannot advocate for this tax now. If I got up as a private citizen, I could. Am I skating close enough to thin ice here?
Did you see me raise my eye?
Spending public money, yes. Okay, all right. This decision on whether or not you want to do this is next summer. So you have time to think about this, and we have time to get much better numbers on this. At this point, the opinion of the committee is that you should be preparing to do this. So you have legal people thinking about what the language would say. You have an understanding of what exactly the money would look like. And the final thing that I've also been explained to is that anything that you would do on the ballot would be what's called permissive, which means it would say the town is permitted to borrow up to a certain amount. It doesn't say the town will borrow the certain amount. So if, between now and the election, we found, or the time that you needed to borrow the money, we were gifted from Taiwan Semiconductor, you wouldn't have to go through the process of borrowing the money. You wouldn't have to hire the brokers. You wouldn't have to do those things. Is that correct? Okay. This, I called an alternative strategy. But actually, I think this needs to happen concurrently with everything else that you've seen already. And if you wondered why we needed our ace in the hole right here, I don't know if you guys realize this, but the guy that made it possible for us to sit here and have this discussion, or you could blame him if you're bored right now, is this man right here. He's the guy that negotiated with the state and with the county to get this land set aside for preservation so that it might exist someday. And if you ever wondered why this didn't move forward 20 years ago, it wasn't for a lack of desire. What happened was that global economic collapse. You may have recalled that. I was a full participant in it. And what happened was the Arizona State Land Department saw that the auctions were going so cheap, they called the auctions off for five years. So they basically didn't matter if we raised the money, if we were ready to try and buy it. They said, we're not selling anything anywhere for five years. And that's what put this thing on ice. So today, what we need to do is we need to form a partnership with Maricopa County and purchase this jointly. And there is a very interesting way that we can do that. I just realized I should have had a map in here. If we look at the maps, and you look at the parcels at the top, Rogers Wash... Maybe I can pop forward to something out of my group. Do you mind? Okay, if you look at those orange parcels on the north part of the map there, those are the parcels that I would suggest that Cave Creek acquire. And then everything, with the exception, I believe that says number five. Yeah, number five is part of the north parcels. But the parcels which surround the park is what we would try and get Maricopa County to acquire. Now, one of the things... See if I can get back to it. Here we go. So when we look at that and we look at the value of those, Maricopa County would come in at about $5.5 million. Town of Cave Creek would come in about $7.8 million. So that gives us a total on that at $13.3. Now, if we're doing it this way, because we're not selling bonds, we're not hiring brokers, we're not holding an election, our actual cost of this transaction is considerably lower than it would be if we did a different path. So if we subtract the $2.5 million, which is in the open space fund, we subtract the money that FORCE has, I think our worst-case scenario would be to raise $2 million. That would leave $3.16 million that I suggest the Town of Cave Creek could pay with non-reserved funds, the money in the bank that we keep telling everybody we have. And here's why that's a good idea. At that point, we have acquired all of the open space that the Open Space Fund is there to acquire. So that half a million dollars a year that was going into the Open Space Fund could be used to, say, give us water. I think somebody told me that you couldn't drink land, but you could drink water, something to that effect. That actually turns out to be about an 18% return on investment. If we look at it that way, that your 3.16 is returning half a million a year, the payoff is in less than seven years. But all of this, every single bit of this, just depends on this guy cutting a deal with Maricopa County. And the good news is, their biggest issue, and we got this from RJ, who is no longer with the county, but was and understands these things, we have a 10-year agreement to acquire this land. So Maricopa County does not have to do this overnight. They can come in with this as they are able, which kind of works for them. Their major problem, according to the sources we've talked to, according to RJ in particular, is that they can't bite this off in one bite, but they can sure bite it off in little ones. And there is another major thing here. If we partner with... The only entity that is really big enough in Arizona to argue with the state is Maricopa County. And when we partner with them, we have a very, very big, powerful dog now at our side, if you will. So they can be really helpful in doing this. Plus, as we have all seen, governments love joint projects. They like to benefit more than just the Town of. If they can benefit the Town of and Maricopa County, or the county of Maricopa County, and also maybe state parks, if we can enlist them, we've got the band back together from Spurcross. So what I would suggest here is that we could begin everything else that we have in this plan and then put our hired gun to work and see if he can cut this deal. It is a huge, huge ask, and he's probably going to shoot me after we walk out later. But that's, I believe, the fastest and most least likely to be turned over later. You know, if we have... I don't know how to touch on this, so you guys will just have to mull this over. But if there is a change in state government, we replace a D with an R, that means everybody else in state government that falls underneath those, all those political appointments change too. And right now, we have a land commissioner that's in favor of doing this. There is a tremendous amount of pressure to increase density, not decrease density, to increase the amount of money available to developers, not decrease the amount of land developers can get. So, you know, if we can get a deal put together with Maricopa County, get that deal to the Arizona State Land Department, get them to approve that, and then immediately acquire what we can with our $2.5 million, at that point, we are acting under the agreement, and that agreement's going to be very hard for a different government to change. and that agreement's going to be very hard for a different government to change. You know, one final thought along that direction. The farthest northwest portion, we'd have to go back to the map, but it is actually closer to Desert Hills than the rest of Cave Creek. That might also be an addition that would make sense for Maricopa County. Even if we picked it up, we could do a land swap with them on that. And if they did include that, it would reduce the Town of Cave Creek's contribution to 1.6 million. And I've used the worst-case scenario of $2 million for the private fundraising. So if it is your choice to turn us loose to try and raise this money privately, we may be able to reduce all those numbers significantly. And I think that pretty well concludes what I've got. Are there any questions? I think we can discuss this, right?
Yeah, yeah, we sure can. So, yeah. Counsel, questions?
No, I think, I think we ought to tell them to raise the money, if they can go out and give private donations, start doing it now. That will, that will help us when it comes time to make the actual decision whether or not to put this on a ballot to ask for a temporary property tax. But I think the sooner we can get busy fundraising, the better off we're all going to be. Personal opinion.
Let's just go around the horn here.
I completely agree with what Dusty just said.
I just am so awestruck, really, by the marketing campaign. You've done a fabulous job. I was in the business. It far exceeds what I've ever accomplished. So congrats on that. I think that it will carry us a long way towards raising some funds, and I would agree that that's the first step, to see if we can.
I'm all in. We were one of the people that put toward money, put money toward the preservation when we thought it was going to be $400 an acre. And maybe if the value goes up, we'll have to put in more money. But I also want to see a strong outreach in the community. I have heard some people say, how much land do you want? When is enough enough? And it's never enough. What are we willing to do in order, for the sake of the community, to get this land? So I think communicating with people who might not agree with moving forward is going to be critical and very important.
Cynthia?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. A lot of good information and a lot of good ideas generated. I think it's important to go ahead and feel the pulse of the community in terms of how many individuals want to participate and in what ways. There's that pride of ownership. If everyone in town has a way to participate, whether it's a small monetary amount, or volunteering, or there's no problem with bake sales, you know, to really make it a community-wide participation event. And that's what I see coming through here. Partnerships are great, but this is our backyard, and we want to keep working in that direction.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I didn't get the materials for this. Could I request that you open the map up again and maybe do a walkthrough for the council? I don't know if the rest of you received your materials, but I think visually, if you could do that exercise, it makes for a powerful impact for us.
You pulled the map up?
We can continue with, we just have a little bit more.
Oh, there is.
That has the map, yeah.
I wondered if you had finance related, and we kind of jumped ahead to the whole gang. Yeah, Steve's got, you're not done yet. However, Steve is more.
Well, I guess we'll run by the map there when you, your privacy. Go ahead.
You won't sit here? You're good with there? All right.
Let me correct a couple things. I didn't single-handedly.
Turn on your mic, please.
I didn't single-handedly negotiate anything with respect to open space. There was a whole lot of people on town council, and Mayor Francia, and Mayor Ernie Bunch, and a whole lot of other folks, including an outside council consultant that met for two and a half years negotiating with the state. So I have to correct that, even though it was flattering. Also, let me, I want to reiterate what our town manager reiterated with us. These are ideas. These aren't even hard recommendations. This is an update. And we know, and we're, at least, I'm totally conscious of the fact that we're here to give you our research that we've worked out, ideas, working things for you to come from. But you know, the hard work on this, we can't cut deals, we can't make promises, that's just outside of our scope. That is, you have, you're the folks that stand for election, and you're the folks that have that responsibility. And I'm, I honor that 100%. What we have here is, here it is. And, you know, deciding on, particularly when it comes to the financing and the timing, that gets complicated. I know your council can tell you that it gets really complicated. So I just want to make sure that you understand, this is facts and ideas, not recommendations, and certainly not directives of what you should do. There's a lot of options here. I know what I would love personally, but that would be that we get it all. But if we can't get it all, then get as much as we can, but look at all of it with, with open eyes. And you have to balance, not only this project, but you have to balance that with water and all the other things you have on your plates. So, and by the way, we're talking about partners, and it's, sometimes it's said as if we just click our fingers at Maricopa County and say, oh, sure, darn, we'll buy half of that. But they can't even probably get the money or get the approval process for a year or so. So this is going to take time to effectuate. We had the easy job. It's gather up the information we can, give you work, use our brains and our ingenuity and our thoughts to give you the information and make suggestions. And in the final, and I believe we're about 90% done on that, and we should have a white paper to you within the next month or so. And then the hard work comes. I think there's a whole lot of people on this committee that will be in action committees and be ambassadors for this, as far as, you know, gathering up support in the town. But let me just go through this quickly, because the objective of the access and open space and conservation and open space recreation, zoned lands, and make recommendations on what priority areas should be focused. Basically, look around and go, what can we partner with? Where do we get the most bang on connectivity? Where do we get the most bang on expansion of existing partners? Expansing on existing public lands, open space. The considerations we did, we did a visual tour. We spent most of the day, and I want to mention my group, Paul Defendorfer, Kathleen Abrey, and Barbara Miller, went with, with, I guess Luke. And we walked some, and we did, you know, those were the, we didn't have good access, we got viewpoints, so we could get an idea of what we were looking at, instead of these nice little cubes. And, you know, I think I can say for the group, we came away going, whoa. I mean, literally, just going, whoa, I've ridden my horse, not this horse, but horses, since 1986, round, and before the park was even a park, and up to Spurcross, and before Spurcross was Spurcross and all that. But when you get out there, there, I know why Spurcross was successful, when I was here involved in it. But you get out there and you look at that land, and you get the feel of that land, and it's just like riding your horse in the park when, you know, on a weekday. It's just awesome. It's quiet, and it's beautiful, and it's been there since, before we were. So, but looking analytically, but see, that's the starting point, though. Huh. Because we have a chance to really, I mean, this isn't like we've got some dirt that somebody wants to put a shopping center on and literally blade to the ground. No, I don't think anybody would want to do that. They may, there may seem to be some threat of it, but this is the perfect kind of land to preserve. So we did a visual tour, we looked at the zoning, and that is, if we acquired certain parcels, how does the zoning of the land adjacent, how is it impacted, for good or for bad? And identifying which parcels could Cave Creek partner with. And again, that is, that's historic knowledge on staff and on council about who we're going to partnership probably with. The most likely, or always, Maricopa County, Desert Land Trust. I think Maricopa County, well, I can't speak for Maricopa County, but I know that it would be some leverage to say that when Maricopa County already has the staff, already has the expertise, already has trails, and you can give them, not give them, but they can have then control over 600,000, 700,000 new acres, and all they have to do is just extend some lines and maybe have space to have a little diversification about what kind of recreation they can do there. I think they're going to be inclined, I think they're going to be inclined to do it. So that's why we looked at those. And I want to turn to, and I am not a computer whiz, I, that little guy, well, this is 212.
Oh, well, that's too.
Bingo. So let's get to the heart of it. As far as expansion, that's, what we mean is, what parcels would expand Maricopa County Park and the Spurcross? And what next page is going to be the connectivity. But we identified, if you have the map up in front of you, parcel seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, those are parcels that would connect with the park and would have some leverage in negotiating with Maricopa County, because it's, they're already there doing It would be an opportunity for the county to enhance and increase campgrounds, and we have to, we have to have some meat on the recreational stuff, that there is some activity that can be done, because that's what the state requires in order to value the land. So it can't just be all conservation. And the county and the town could partnership to explore further equestrian sites for multiple uses. And I didn't put that one in there. Small recreation areas for public, for the public to exercise horses, spillover areas for the rodeo participants over by the rodeo grounds. And, but these are the ideas. They're not solid recommendations, they're something to give you to thought. But I think what is solid is that these parcels that we've listed are more likely than not going to be in a pretty good leverage position to partnership with Maricopa County, because I think, you know, assuming that they have money and they have staff and they can get it through and approved, which is all why this is just recommendation and solutions, not solutions, ideas. Let me turn to eight to 19, because I have some interesting, some interesting parcels that we looked at. And this is, we gathered this up, and then we went and looked, and then we looked at the maps, and then we went and looked physically, and then got back and had a lot of discussion. And the connectivity to expand the trail system, that's Spurcross into Cave Creek and connect it with the county park, as opposed to just pure expansion of landmass for those I do have a lot of familiarity, personal familiarity with number four. And we picked number four because it would connect Spurcross Ranch to the trails to the north end of Schoolhouse Road. And I can tell you, I ride, I ride out of my barn through a big wash right south of Fleming Springs, and come out on Schoolhouse Road, hang a left, and that arched trail runs right into, right into this area, number four. And it's just beautiful. And the neat thing about that is, you get number six also, and you look at, so that's just getting number four connected to Spurcross and over. It's beautiful, and there's a plateau. You don't, it's hard to read it, but Spurcross Road runs, just if you're looking at the map to the left, I think that would be west, just a little west of, sometimes we go through up Spurcross, and you can, there's some Wildcat Trails over here, and you can get into number four right now. I mean, I do it every day. If we can, if we can get number four, and there's, and also with respect to connectivity and zoning, right next to this, like, I guess it would be the northwest corner of number four, is a really high-end development community, for some really, really nice houses. And we're told by staff that they would, that would be a really good marketing target, because they would love to have open space all around their homes, rather than have something developed that they don't want in those Wildcat Trails. So that's just an example, one example. We also picked number three, and that's because it would also connect Spurcross to Wildcat and Fisher Trails into Cohava Springs, and the south, and south to Cave Creek Park. And that's, right, number three is right up here, right west of number four. And if the county chose to purchase some part of the parcels, which Bill was talking about, surrounding the county park and partner with Cave Creek, it reduces, obviously, it reduces the cost to the town. So that's why connectivity and expansion were part of our land evaluation. I want to emphasize, we looked at a lot of parcels, and there, I'm going to jump back. There are none of the parcels that we saw that weren't awe-inspiring and didn't have great value to, that could potentially have great value to the town. And I'm talking about, not only to the town aesthetically, for lifestyle, for recreation, but also that would add to property values here in town and make Cave Creek more attractive than it already is. And we ain't doing shabby. If y'all talk to any realtors, there's, anybody that wants to get out in nature, Cave Creek is a destination. And it's been true since 1986, actually. And this is where I, just on page 20, I put it up, Bill's beat the ideas about financing that drum as much as it needs to be beaten. I want you to, again, make sure that you understand, we know, we know what our calling is. They're listed under ideas. These are just ideas. It may, it may be that staff and council can come up with a completely different method that works better than that. These are just ideas we had. And again, the hard work's going to happen after this committee no longer exists. And again, there's one set of ideas for buying everything at once, and one set of ideas for buying things over, buying acres and land over time. And I'm going to leave those that way, because again, we've talked about financing a lot. But I want you to, if you look at, when you get your materials, and I'm, sorry, counsel, that you didn't get materials, but the evaluation and prioritization. the evaluation and prioritization chart, it's on the, it's the next one that's up now. That's Xerox that for yourself. Because when you're thinking about this stuff, you, it gives you, it gives you, if you start from the left to the right, it, it gives you how we, how the group prioritized it. And I want, and that's based on our criteria that I talked to you about. And, and then the next, the next line is the parcel number on the map. So you can look, oh, number one is 12 and you have the map right there. How many acres it is? You got suggested minimum purchase, three, then safe trail connectivity, three, visual beauty, two, and that's a prioritization, excuse me, one to 12. And then the total is eight. So that parcel ends up being first rated. You can look at that anytime and get right to where you're looking at it. And you can look at, you can then evaluate and add to and think outside the box on, if you know some area, if you know something about the neighborhood, if you know something about the desirability of having open space around an area, you can work from this sheet and it's a basic sheet. And again, that's all I'm going to go into. And I know I went through it fast and I skipped a lot of stuff. Just take a look at the materials here and honestly, most of the prioritization is self-evident and is most, many of you that have been here a long time already know it. And I know if you don't, Luke does, Grady does do. So, and again, Bambi and Grady were really instrumental in getting us up to speed on, 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 one, just getting us to these properties and also just giving us ideas of where we could, where we could have some leverage. And so that's, that's what we've done. And again, I think we'll be done within a month or so. And, and I just hope that the work we've done at least reflects and demonstrates that we really believe in this. You know, and I, I've been here since, and I say this a lot and I don't, I'm not bragging. I've just been here a long time, since 1986. And I helped write the first general plan after we incorporated on, I was on the planning commission. And it was, it was clean slate. You know, and the developers wanted to develop every square inch, you know, quarter acres at the most. So we had, it was, but what went out then was if you look back at the original general plan that had, and it's gone through every amendment to date, is the cornerstone of, of what's good for Cave Creek is a combination of three things. Open space, an effective and vital trail system, corridors that are free and open so that wildlife can move and low density. And there were all kinds of options of, you know, the business folks and this folks. And it was, you didn't get to set up higher. We had card tables over, over in the admin building. So, you know, I was prosecuting prison gangs at that point and I'd get off work and drive here and sit looking up at people while the spittle kind of, you know, got in your face and stuff. But when it came down to the vote and when it came down to the vast majority of, of the public input at, at the beginning of this town, it was, we're here because of the great Sonoran foothills. We are blessed that this is where we live. And for the folks that weren't tree huggers, they were horse people. They looked at it and said, we need horses. I don't care about the environment all much as long as I have horse. But you know, the best argument there and it is now is when you have all this open space and you have all this beauty and that's the setting, then, you know, the land that is for sale is more valuable. And that's not even new either. It's called location, location, location. It's Realty 101. So I know that there's challenges and I know, I, I don't pretend that this, the folks that live in this town are the same as they were years ago or when we did Spur Cross. But I do believe this. Something, something very great that will last forever can happen if we just keep working together and plug at it and, and be light on our feet and, you know, you know, jab, jab, jab and punch and, you know, take one. But I think we can get this done. And if we can't, and I know that there's, I, I know at least some of you would like to see it all done. I would love to see it all done. If we can't get it all done, we can get a quarter that of connectivity and expansion with partners done, I believe. I, I think you're going to have a lot of people that when this, when this, and we, I'm telling you, our white paper will be in within a month. I'm not kidding you, a month or so. We're going to wrap this up and then we can, we are committed to help you because we are in this together. And this is a beautiful town. And the more of, and I'm not going to get into God and creation, but the more that we can be stewards of this natural, beautiful, unique place we live, will be remembered favorably. And if you do, I know, I, we were this close, we were this close when I was on council. And that was one of the worst days of my life is when the, the report came back from the Army Corps of Engineers that the exchange that we were going to use to afford the land didn't work out because there weren't enough tortoises or enough something. Anyway, it was, our land wasn't valuable enough in their exchange to make it work. It was two and a half years of negotiations and up and down and all over the place. So I know there are people in this town that are committed to this. And, and I, and I, I think we can get it done and that's all I got to say. And I hope you have a great holiday season.
Can we hear from staff as to feasibility here? Are you prepared to take a position on feasibility of, you will need a formal way of getting this done and a plan? So what are your thoughts, Grady?
Well, I originally, when we came up with the concept of the ad hoc committee, we had a timetable and the timetable that you've seen tonight fits very well with that if there is an election. As far as the, the private fundraising and such, they're trying to, you know, move forward with that. I don't, I don't think that there's an issue with anything that's been talked about tonight. The biggest concern that I have is trying to get the people in the community excited and aware that this is an issue before them. And I think it's going to take a lot of effort, a lot of time on the part of staff. And then all the, the good residents who are serving on this ad hoc committee, they're very jazzed up. They want to turn themselves, once you accept your, the final report and you conclude the ad hoc committee's work, they want to turn it into a political action committee. And so a lot of the ideas you've seen tonight are not really appropriate for the town to get involved in. But it would be definitely for a political action committee. So they're, they're already ahead of the curve right here. And so I do think it is very feasible. But I do think it's, you know, we're, we're kind of starting a little bit behind. And I'm not saying that as a bad thing, like, you know, we, we messed up or anything. No, given the time period that we have, it's just, it's going to take some education in getting people on board to understand why this is critical. If, if that is what, you know, this group will be doing and the town will do a lot of public information, get that out, publicity pamphlets and everything you have to do for an election. If there will be an election this year, that's, those are all going to be questions that the council's going to be tasked with when they come back with their white paper. You saw several financial options. Some of the money is already in place now. Some of that money will grow in the future. And I also think the partnerships, Maricopa County, I think that we've got some really, probably two to three years of getting the county to go ahead and, and budget for something like this, but I think the county will come through. So, and that will take about half the cost away, right? I believe it was five and a half million dollars or so potentially. So, sorry, I gave you a loaded answer, mayor, but.
But you're ready to proceed if council gives you the direction to do so?
We, we are.
Yeah. Of course, we can't take any votes tonight because it's not agendized for voting. But I, I think my personally, I've ridden my horse hundreds of times on some of that land, walked probably as many times. So it, and we've, and Luke gave us tours of the land. So we've seen the same thing and the, I've heard no one in town or on council who is even reluctant. And the kind of spectacular work that this committee has done is truly amazing. I'm just blown away by the thoroughness, the rating system, the map, the focus on self-help with donations, with outreach campaigns. It's the best work I've seen in the town, I think, in the, you know.
Mayor, may I, may I say something?
Sure.
And I didn't say it enough. Thank you. I mean, if we can get this done, means a lot.
Well, I'm all in, so let's, me, this is, I can't speak as the, as a vote, but as, as mayor, I'm all in and this went on my bucket list and my time up here. So, and I, I really would like to see us move on the 160 acres and especially the really primo stuff. There's, there's no reason to wait on things like that. There are so many, I, I'm not, I'm not, the private donation and the, and the county kind of makes it tough for an election in November. You know, it'd be nice to be able to do that and win because you want to win. You don't want to, can I say that?
I said this, I said this to Grady and I'm saying it to you, mayor. Thought with great deal of respect, sir, you know, I respect you a lot. We're not, well, I as chairman of this committee, want to assure you that we don't want to put any artificial pressure and timelines on this. We know that we are not, when I say we're all in this together, well, Maricopa County is part of that. And there might be a whole lot of big donors and a whole lot of that might come along too. I'd rather have it ready to go and the town fired up and then have election, then have an election and, you know, six months after the election, I wonder why we didn't get it done.
Well, the longer we wait, the more likely you are to win the election, in my view. Because you'll have more time for donations, you'll have more time to organize.
And so will staff and so will council.
I, but I, I, with the political situation that Bill talked about, I think it's important that we get something on the books ASAP. That's my personal opinion and I'm willing to agendize something to do that.
May I interject one more time, please? Thank you. First of all, you guys have been very kind because none of you asked me the really hard question, which is how much can you raise? And the, I can't tell you that because I haven't done this before. Give me a tangible product, I could give you a sales forecast, but this is a bit more challenging. But what I'm hoping that you will do is to empower us to go after this money. And you just made my point for me, which is that if we have a solid effort to raise the money privately before we go to an election, I think that that will, will reflect favorably on the election because we will have given it the college try or whatever you want to call it. And my hope in doing this was that we would come here, that you would see that we were prepared, that we have the materials to do a campaign that every one of you would be proud of. And, but we can't, you have to empower us. You have to say, yeah, it's time for you guys to turn the corner, start raising the money. You know, Bill, give whatever Stacy needs to Stacy so Stacy can make us all look smarter than we really are. And away we go. That's, that's kind of where we're at right now. We're going to come up with more ideas on fundraising. We will come up with better ideas in every aspect. Every day this gets a little better. But you need to turn us loose if that's what you want us to do next. But this is your decision, as Steve is completely right, this is your decision. We work for you. I've reminded the committee many times that we're here at your, your pleasure.
Bill, can, can we go to each staff member and ask their opinion of this without, without a vote? Okay, we started that, we'll start down here with, to the left then. And if you'd like to comment on, on you, what you think of the feasibility and the plan they've laid out today, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to me. I think Cave Creek is a lap race. It's passing the baton. The experience up here began with incorporation, obviously in 86. It was a couple of years of work prior to that to get incorporation. The intel on incorporation's necessity in the mid 80s was based on everything from happy hour discussion to people who might have worked for the county or the state and brought that, this, this was the days of no grocery stores north of Bell Road. This was the days of two lane of asphalt that conformed with the washes all the way down to Bell Road. The seminal times, I think that have come to Cave Creek clearly would begin with incorporation. The next would be in 94, and I won't use the term in front of Bill because it could have legal protections. But in parentheses, when the town downsized by council action, we had tired land mass at that time. It was in the town to define what rural meant and, and literally heavenwardens, which defined how many animals were permitted, small animals and large animals and so forth. Then I think the next ethical event was Spur Cross Ranch that represented literally an existential threat to the town. But the town was at a moment of complete unpreparedness, not, not just even the least of which was lack of staffs. The few people we had working in town hall. And Steve made reference to it earlier, but in those days, the outside council was Tom Irvin. And Tom Irvin, who recently passed, was one of the most singular staff contributors of that effort at that time that helped us for a cross ranch. But it was like those old black and white silent films with the Keystone Cops. Every day we were doing something on Spur Cross until it ended up in kind of a giant orchestral completion with the governor and the state and the cast of thousands. But I think this is the next ethical opportunity for the town that the baton has to pass and it has to be dealt with as fairly as it is currently, can be done currently for the next few years and the next generation that comes after that. I would take, take a very brief moment to argue or lobby against making decisions on open space preservation by rank prioritization. Even though everybody here has their emotional attachments to certain pieces and parcels. It's the United States, it's the United Land Reservation. Each neighborhood will benefit if they have adjacent access to this. Others will benefit by secondary access. But there are caucuses, we're one town, but many neighborhoods. And we each have our own neighborhood identity and we have our own priorities and values. And although I agree with the analysis that the parcels to the north, which augment the existing size of Spur Cross Ranch, would seem to jump out naturally. I think we get into a very, very dangerous and critical potential failure area if we say we're going to take 10 or five or three or one and not do it all en masse. In fact, I would wager an experiment that we can't probably do. But if you produced a map of every proposed preservation site and you went to the neighborhoods around those sites and handed them a piece of paper of how their parcel related to that site, you'd have all these caucuses down here active saying, please save me, save me, save me. Everybody has an emotional bond. Folks like Stacy have a secondary benefit, which the view corners and the vistas, people who are in the higher northern part of the town benefit from not only the lack of rooftops and night lighting and so forth in their immediate view. So I think the 4005, it could be successful prioritizing it and trying to do it over several years. But I think the thrust of what you advised today, which I walk away with, that I want to. But I think the thrust of what you advised today, which I walk away with, and then I want to tell you what Catherine taught me a couple of weeks ago, because I have to think about it, is that if you do the worst case scenario and you join it with a reverse calendar and you reverse the calendar from the November election to tonight, what all has to be done to get to the November election? If you want to be successful. And then what Catherine said to me a couple of weeks ago, which stuck with me, which is an interesting thing I haven't debated in my mind, is the council is the board of directors for the town and theoretically there's intrinsic trust on the part of the voters with the decisions that are made here. So then I weigh myself saying, should the people that vote in the community, the residents, vote on the preservation of the four thousand five acres? As it further proves that they prioritize this in twenty twenty-five, like they may have back in nineteen ninety-nine? Or are we wasting time or wasting a marketing campaign that doesn't realistically have much lead time? And entrust the board of directors, if we can produce four votes to pay eleven point two five million dollars for an acre of land to get water, we should be able to pay for whatever amount of money is necessary absent what you can raise with private funds for something as important. Harquahela was eleven point two, this, this bid came in originally eleven point eight, one acre, four thousand five acres. So maybe there is enough wisdom or experience up here from people that participated to vote whether they want to proceed with this and not want to take the risk with going to the voters. On the other hand, you could argue that the voters, even though we believe the board of directors would like to be personally involved in this decision and the prevailing whim, as told to me by my spouse and others, what do I need more preservation land for? But this is not about preserving land. This is about preserving lifestyle. You don't have to have a horse or a pair of hiking boots or John Muir's books to experience the benefit of what this acquisition could do. This buys something which is, and I don't want to give another filibuster here, everybody gets it, okay? What is twice the size of Spurcross. It augments Spurcross. It preserves all the northern canyon lands, which are the vestibule of the Tonto National Forest, two point two million square acres. In fact, you still can ride by horse or even off-road via going hike all the way up to Sheetz Crossing and even all the way up to the Muggion Rim, Seven Springs and beyond. You know, this is not the New York, Washington port, or there's still enough left out there to experience as it was a century earlier. So I do think it's time to pass the baton and take the baton while we have it here and be, make it ready for the next group. I don't think there's a singular more important issue to the town's present or the town's future than this ability to make a decision. And I'm not recommending that the council make the decision for the voters, but if we run out of time, what you outlined this evening was the financial feasibility of doing this with a vote of four people out here. So I think that's hopeful and maybe the community will provide some reaction after the holidays, whether they feel importantly about this or not. But I, I think it's dangerous to backslide on the four thousand five. And if you want to test it, ask staff to put out a, a direct mail to people who own property in the town and say, you're at just, you know, you're close to one, three and five. And when they've seen what their proximity is immediately or secondarily, they're going to begin to become involved in the discussion of the issue. And I think they will have an admitted, you know, the view out your kitchen window or your living room window is an intimate relation with the desert because it's your daily experience. For those who don't hike, and sometimes they drive friends and guests up to Spurcross Ranch to see the vistas. But I think, I, I hope the majority will keep the four thousand five intact.
I want to, I want to ask for clarification. I don't hear of anyone who's saying that they're not in favor of the four thousand five, if I could finish. But we have a contract requires us to buy one sixty.
Right.
And getting that contract moving in force and getting it started, I think is critical, given the political situation that we're likely to face in that same November timeframe. So if, if you, if I was in that, if I was in that group that you thought I was prioritizing and not going to the four thousand five, that's, that's not true.
No, it's not. And I wasn't trying to imply that, forgive me if I can cross that line. I only raised a cautionary note because I saw they're prioritized by number. Number one is PA sites preserved. And I understand all the reasons, not the least of which, well, we owe the land trust in terms of decades of ability. But, uh, once we start cherry picking, I think we have subgroups arguing against each other what's important. I think we all stand together on this one, if we can, but that was not meant as any reference was started.
Okay, the reason that we prioritize this is because in the charter for the organization of the working groups, one of the working groups was tasked with prioritization. Now, one of the reasons for that prioritization is that, uh, the, the parcels may auction individually. So we have a, a little bit of an issue with that, but we didn't, we didn't necessarily decide that. I don't, in fact, all of the materials, everything says four thousand five acres because that has been the goal of the committee. And the original, the very first thing this committee did was we decided that we wanted to save the four thousand five acres. The big goal was worth it. But it is important to understand that not everything is equal. So if we did have to make a hard choice, we would have a tool to do the job.
Cynthia.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's easy to have great enthusiasm, uh, for the project and for victory when we have all the, uh, great cheerleaders here in the room with us. The element that we don't have is what is our opposition or resistance within the community? And the communication outreach group indicated, uh, survey possibility, uh, that would help us gain some of that information because that's the element we want. Um, individuals I speak to are all go, all favorable. Let's vote for it. Let's go for it. But we need an accurate assessment if that's a viable option, uh, before we put it to a public vote. And again, we have some time to do that, uh, to help inform our decision on the strategy to move forward. All of the funding options are good. Uh, we should take advantage of them, realizing that we share some of those donations with other critical groups in town, uh, and that there's only so much money locally that's going to come our way. But we have lots of options and we should use them, but we should know where our resistance is going to come from as well. Thank you.
Tom?
Cave Creek is great. We have fifty miles of trails. I've walked probably all fifty of them. I've spent significant time in all of these areas, even up to the far northwest. And, uh, it, it's great. I hope, I want to see where this process will take us. I want to move forward with the process. I don't want to deal with negatives. I want to deal with things that are positive. Spurcross helped to identify Cave Creek. If we've still got that identity, this probably is something that we can do. Let's take this ball and let's move forward.
Like, Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I need to correct a mischaracterization, I believe, that Mr. Ogerton, uh, provided to this room. Comparing one acre of land, uh, for our Harquahela water deal to four thousand five acres here is, uh, comparing apples to apples, and that's just not the case. This may not be the time to argue it, but I just need to get the facts out there because it's just not the case. Uh, the one acre of the Harquahela land will provide us with five hundred acre feet per year for one hundred years of water. So it's not just a simple plot of land compared to four thousand five acres. It's not that simple. It's a mischaracterization and it needs to be clarified tonight as well as in the future, when I'm sure it will come up in the next election. But for the topic at hand, I have a question for our attorney. I think it needs to be clarified what the council can participate in and, and the town itself and where the boundaries are in terms of, um, being PAC oriented or them establishing a PAC and us not being able to get involved in that way. Because in a previous life, uh, when I was directing communications for Central Arizona Project, we had a big, uh, issue trying to preserve the Navajo Generating Station in Page, Arizona, to preserve it for its power. And we entertained a multi-year campaign to keep that power plant alive. So we were advocating and it was justified and it was legal. And we spent thousands and thousands of dollars. And this will require an investment of money for the marketing campaign alone. Um, and where is that going to come from if we're not allowed to participate in that fashion? So we need clarification.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think it was helpful to have your, the ad hoc group identify for you a number of financing options that will be looked at before you even get to an election. You, as elected officials, have, and your predecessors have signed, uh, development agreements with the state. You need, and, and you have a duty to get, to, to, in effect, purchase a hundred and sixty acres. You need to find the funds. You can find the funds as long as we're not talking about an election. I'm not worried about influencing an election. And, and so right now, I think, given all the opportunity, and the best slide I saw in this is number fifteen. It was that last opportunity for financing. That I think you, you can weigh in on. You, you have to figure out a way to solicit funds, not for an election, but for you to find the funds to purchase the property that you, you're obligated to purchase in one case by, on the first hundred and sixty acres. Firstly, when I look at the categories of people who, who have restrictions, they have the least restriction. They're citizens. As long as they're not spending public money, we're fine. But the, but, but the minute, the, you have the next, you're elected officials. You are allowed, let's assume we are now doing an election. You are individually allowed to, to, to make statements, to influence the election, as long as you do it in your individual capacity. You can even use your name, Mayor or Vice Mayor, but you can't use public funds. The people who can't do anything are the staff because, on, on duty time, because that, that would be public, public funds supporting them. Bottom line is.
During the election.
Once it's called, good point, once it's called. See, that's why I like the idea. And I think one of the decisions you're going to have to make is what election are we talking about? But I think listening to them, I see four things that you need to direct them to do. The first thing is to, to, to make sure that, um, uh, they carefully describe in you, and Steve said it in his slide, the purposes for the funds, because the worst thing that can happen is if a preliminary initial donor is told one thing and he or she comes there and says, I was lied to. That'll make, preach donations questionable and it'll harm you. Secondly, we need to completely keep the funds private and not public. The funds you're collecting can't come to you, can't come to you. They need to go to an entity. Thirdly, and that's where I started this discussion, I truly like the idea of going through all the options short of an election. Keep the election on the back burner, knowing those dates are there, although I don't know where in the hell you got a hundred and forty-eight days. I've never seen that. I've seen a hundred and fifty, I've never seen a hundred and forty-eight. We can talk about that later.
Yeah, you'll, you'll love it because three different governmental bodies gave me three different dates. That's why I was incorrect.
But, but the point is though, the point is, I think right now you have all the opportunity to do whatever you want to help get funds so you can buy the land. I think we just need to keep, keep, the fourth is keep the election completely isolated. Make sure we don't blow the dates. I think you're going to have to give us guidance. I, I didn't hear Steve talk about this. Is it twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-eight we're going to love for the election? You have to give us guidance on that with their input, uh, but then once you call the election, that's when the restrictions apply. Finally, I really, I was at the county when you did, I was working with Rick Romley on Spurcross. I truly like Steve's idea. I think the county can be your best partner. I truly think find the funds. I know you all want four thousand five. Find the funds to get the hundred and sixty acres and, and buys a parcel that leverages the county. Then I think the county will be with you. So that's the fifth option is, is to make, I think the county is a good partner.
Twenty twenty-eight is too late.
It's not my fault.
Just, I'm just, what, what Bill was talking about, if we change state government in twenty twenty-six, the opposite, the party who is not in power right now has publicly stated they want higher density. They're looking at all sorts of crazy options, like digging a canal from the Mississippi River into Arizona. I mean, it's some crazy stuff. They're looking for more density. One of the things that they're talking about is making sure that any state land trust land would go to developers. So even if we have an agreement, well, you know, you say the same thing, but take a look at what Axon did in, in Scottsdale. And I think that's the sense of urgency. If I, if, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. Yeah, one of the, you know, my background is in business. And when you establish an agreement with another party, you have, you have an agreement, but when you actually begin to execute under the agreement, so transactions are made per that agreement, at that point, that contract is very hard to break. That is why I am suggesting that what we need to do now is get a memorandum of understanding with the county that says, we're going to buy this part, you're going to buy that part, you've got ten years to buy your part. We have, according to our extension, ten years to buy our part. And then we do the first, uh, transaction under the agreement, which is to knock down the hundred and sixty acres. At that point, I think we have a, a pretty hard reverse contract and we have a big powerful party in the contract, which is Maricopa County, which I think the state would be, they could crush Cave Creek, but Maricopa County is a different animal.
Never say never with politicians.
You know, I said at the bottom of the flag, it should say the developers always win. So, you know, I, I think I'd, yes, I agree.
So it's your turn.
My turn? All right. Uh, all right, I'm going to promise you no filibusters here. You said something important a second ago, and I know, I don't know about everybody else in this room, but we've played rugby together. Not together, but we've played the sport. And in the sport of rugby, which is camaraderie at its finest level, highest level, there's something, what you say to another guy is with you. And we are with you. I am with you. I can't speak for everybody up here, but I am with you. And I know Bill knows this for a fact, since I got elected even before. We're totally with you on this. I am. Again, I don't want to speak for anybody but me right now. You know, failure is not an option. It never is in my mind. And if we, you know, give it the old college try and we don't make it, I'm not thinking about that. I'm thinking about pulling this off right now. And if we got to get started at seven o'clock tomorrow morning, then so be it, okay? You know, the, you know, before we start prioritizing, you know, parcels and this and that, well, now we need the money. That's the bottom line, you know, like Jerry Maguire said, or Cuba Gooding doing here, show me the money for crying out loud. That's what we want, private money. Now that I know that I can go out in my end and raise some money, I'm going to give it the old college try and I'm going to come through. I'm not going to take no for an answer. You know, no way. It's just not how I operate. The other things I want to say real quick, it's a little messy on my notes, is, um, going back to keeping things on point. I don't know how Harquahela came into this, but, um, our number one priority in Cave Creek, just so it's known, is fricking water. Okay, we need to drink water. If we don't have water, then we're going to be out of here and none of this will matter, okay? But this is about the land tonight and that's what I want to prioritize is we got to stay on point here, okay? And I heard somebody else say down there that money locally, no, money from all over Maricopa County. There are other sources of money and there are money out of state. There's tons of money. And you just got to figure it out, who you're going after. And again, don't take, you know, for an answer because it's not going to happen, not in my world at least. You know, so basically, uh, failure is not an option. I'm with you. And I, and I appreciate every single person who's been involved in this. Thank you very much. And, um, you know, my motto, and you'll see it down the road, is all in, all out, nothing less. Thank you.
Dusty?
So a couple of things to think about. I think the, the, the PAC needs to, to get moving now. And I think with that PAC, we need to start, uh, soliciting donations as soon as possible. I think a couple of things you need to, need to talk, need to take a look at. We have three major sports teams in, uh, in Maricopa County. All three of those teams look for ways to advertise and ways to provide funding for cool stuff. Stuff that they, they can run in commercials saying, see what a good citizen I am. The Cardinals just gave several million dollars away. The Diamondbacks give millions of dollars away a year. The Suns give away money every year. Go ask them. The other thing to think about, we have three major universities here, three major public universities and one major, uh, private university, right? We have Arizona State, we have, um, University of Arizona, we have Northern, uh, Northern Arizona, and we have Grand Canyon University. All of them have environmental programs. How about if we cut a deal where they buy a chunk and we let them run a whole bunch of experiments out there? You know, they want to count the number of, uh, desert tortoises in Rogers Wash. God love them. It's a great thing to do to get college students out there to help clean things up once a year or two. But what I'm saying is don't just limit it to private institutions. Go take a look at those. And I think you'll get quite a bit of funding from those guys, particularly since environmental, uh, programs and, um, conservancy programs are a big deal with all four of those universities. Just a thought.
Okay, great, I guess for you and I, it'd be to put together a plan, and any council action that's necessary to get this kicked off and kick into gear and bring it back for a direct-
That's correct. In fact, we still have more committee meetings. This was not their, they have probably one left, maybe, or two? So, we, I think the next step, what you just said is correct, but I think we will bring back a white paper from the group with the recommendations formally presented, and then we'll take an action to formally dissolve the ad hoc committee, accept their report, and then a political action committee can be started. They could actually start now, if they wanted to, so.
Okay, I'd like all the committee members to stand up again. I'd like to give you a round of applause.
Hey, I've got a quick question for the committee here, and for Bill, et cetera. When can we, when can we get, start fundraising? It sounds like tomorrow?
No, when we have an account.
Okay, may I interject?
Yeah.
We need three things.
Yes.
The 501(c)(3) MOU needs to be finalized, so we can actually have a place to deposit the money. Number two, we need the boilerplate statement that describes the use of the land. Number three, we need the mechanical function of understanding, who do I give the check to? And we've discussed that with staff, and I, I think that Sherry, or someone in her area. But if I have three action items, here, I'm being the boss. Sorry, but give us those three.
It sounds like the collateral material.
Yeah.
The town can't take it.
No, no, not the, it'll go to force, but we have, we just need to understand mechanically who to hand the check to, so I have to entrust that to the council.
Do that offline, I think. It's, we've been here two hours, let's take a 10-minute break. If we reconvene at 7:05.
Steve said we could just give him the checks, and he'd take care of them.
Steve's- Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the council discussion, appointment of two residents to fill the vacancies on the planning commission. Luke, take over.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Very briefly, the planning commission consists of seven members appointed by the town council. They serve staggered three-year terms. Tonight, there are two applicants to fill two seats. One of the applicants, Charlie Spitzer, is an existing seated member. His term expires at the end of the year. He is seeking reappointment. You also have one other resident, Josh Wedge. He is here this evening. He has applied to be on the planning commission. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Josh, would you like to come to the podium and let us meet you, tell us a little bit about yourself and what you wanna do?
Hello, everyone. My name is Josh Wedge. I grew up here. I've lived here pretty much my whole entire life. I'm a small business owner. I am a welder fabricator of architectural metals. I do a lot of work in this town, and in the neighboring areas. I went to high school with Luke, and so, yeah, yeah. From there, I went to Arizona State University. I was a product designer for many years. And then, after that, I also taught product development and product design in the College of Architecture at ASU for a while as well. But yeah, I live right in town, just right behind the Buffalo Chip. So, you know, my family loves this town. My brother lives down the street from me, too. He's very active as well. He's an architect. So we do a lot of design, building, and development of this town, you know, on a small scale. So, you know, private homes and things of that nature, so. I would like to keep going with the, you know, tradition of this town, and preserve its, just everything that it has currently, and make sure that, you know, it's, it's just love, love what we have going right now, so. And I don't wanna see any crazy, big skyscrapers or structures, and so that nature, since we all love the outdoors and everything that we currently have as well, so.
You also have any questions for Josh? To the left?
Sold.
Right, do you know Kalen?
Yeah, yeah, you've been to my shop a couple of times. John Ryder, Joey Dano.
I have been to your shop.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, don't hold it against him.
I won't.
Okay, seeing, seeing no questions, thank you, Josh.
Thank you very much.
So we're looking for a motion, then? Oh, excuse me, we do have, we do have public comment.
I was gonna speak, I feel like it.
Okay, okay, you're all done. Thanks, Josh. Okay, motion from somebody?
I'll make a motion. I move that both applicants, Josh Wedge and Charlie Spitzer, be appointed to the planning commission, and I thank them for coming forward.
Second.
I think Cynthia got hers out just a fraction of a second before, in a second, and so, any comments, comments from the-
Yeah, again, Josh, thank you for coming forward. You're, we need more young people. You don't need old guys like me on the council. We really appreciate your coming forward and working for the town, both of you. So thank you very much, and thanks also goes to Charlie Spitzer.
Cynthia?
Thank you, Josh, for coming forward. It's good to have someone with a long-term perspective of Cave Creek, as well as technical expertise. So that will be a welcome addition on the planning commission. And Charlie has served well in his terms, and likewise has a lot of background to continue the work of the commission, so support both.
Tom, do you wanna make it?
No, just disclosure, my wife works with your dad all the time on projects, so I know him through osmosis. It's a great story.
Comments down here.
And all those guys you mentioned played rugby with you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Josh, you're on.
Thank you.
Get to work. Okay, next is council discussion, possible approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the provision of law enforcement services by Maricopa County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, the item before you is intergovernmental agreement that was recently completed between Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and the town. The previous agreement was pretty good. There were some housekeeping items that we made to actually streamline a little bit. The term of this will go from January 1st, if approved tonight, through June of 2035. So the advantage of this over the previous one is that it's for a total of nine years. It's initially for a term of five years, and then four one-year renewals. We did have a little bit of a sticking point, and that's why it took us so long to get this wrapped up. We had some previous language as it related to having the town be named as an additional insured. We felt that was very important, particularly in this day and age of officer-involved shootings and/or chases and things like that, where the town could get pulled in. While we were indemnified with their basic viability insurance, we wanted that just extra peace of mind to be named as the additional insured. So thanks to our town attorney, he was able to find an intergovernmental agreement that we had with Maricopa County through Animal Control that had the language that was in there. And this was not the sheriff's office that was having the problem. It was actually the risk management, which is not part of the sheriff's office. So after taking some convincing, that language was able to be reinserted. I also tried to get some additional performance measures in related to the staffing. And the problem is, because we're so small here with the BEETS, they really couldn't get it to work, because Carefree's different, and then they also had the district. So we had to just drop that. So we had to just drop that. It didn't make sense, but we do have some performance standards already in. But I was trying to get similar ones that I had worked on when I worked in Fountain Hills on their contract. That is all I have at this point. I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions?
No, I'm glad to see it.
Okay, public comment?
I have none.
Okay, so we are ready for a motion?
I'll make it. I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the provision of law enforcement services by M C S O through December 31st. I'm sorry, through June 30th, 2031, with four one-year options to make it a total of June 30th, 2035.
Second.
No, I'm glad we're, glad we're able to keep them on board here. I think it's important that we have a sheriff substation here, and I think it's, it's awesome for the town. And go kick the, kick the, the carefree guys and tell them to get with it.
What you just said about the substation, I hope it stays. I think this will give them a reason to stay at this point. So it's a no-brainer. Yeah.
Other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Grady, for clarifying the insurance question. That was one of the paragraphs I had had highlighted. So I think that certainly serves the town well.
Thank you.
Others?
Well, okay. I got stopped by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. Yeah, believe it or not. And he said, do you know why I stopped you? I said, no, I'm a good citizen. I'm the vice mayor of Cave Creek. And not that that influences you in any way. Because that wasn't the intent, just that I was a good citizen. And my license plate tag had expired in June. And I never knew that. I never noticed it, and I never got any kind of notification. So the sheriff was just a really great guy, and he let me renew it online as we spoke, as he hovered over me. And I did it all online and paid for it, and I showed him it was paid, and he let me go. So I just wanted to say there's some good dudes out there, and I really appreciated it.
Great eyesight.
Great. I don't know how, how did they see that? How did they see that? No, it was on Cave Creek Road.
Well, you gave me, you gave me a great idea. I'll have to drop the vice mayor card next time I get pulled over.
I never do that, but I wanted him to know I was a good citizen.
Well, I'm going straight home and checking YouTube and see if that's a true story.
Right. So anyway, thumbs up to the Maricopa County Sheriff's Department.
I forgot where I'm at. Any other comments? Okay, and we have the, there's public comment? Okay, so we're ready for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The third is the town manager update to the town council on FAA environmental assessment relating to the upcoming Phoenix area modernization project.
I'll be very brief on this. Since we don't really have a lot of information at this point, in your packet, there was a letter and a information from the FAA. Essentially, the FAA is going through a modernization process. We've been seeing it nationally with some of the air traffic control issues. So all of the area, 10 airports are going to participate in this. They are, the FAA is conducting an environmental assessment, meaning basically want to determine environmental impacts on some of the measures that they're going to be recommending. Unfortunately, in the information they gave us, did not have sufficient information for the staff and I to evaluate, but we're going to continue to review this and see what type of impacts there may be. One of the areas I do think on some of the flyer, or not flyer, but the map that they had in the information packet is flight patterns. It appears that, for instance, Sky Harbor may have some potential impacts, even though it's way up high. There's also Scottsdale and Deer Valley. So they had some dash lines that were going right between Carefree and Cave Creek. So we're going to continue to monitor this. We'll come back periodically to the council. We'll also let you know there's going to be some public comment meetings that they're going to hold in the first quarter of 2026. So we'll let our residents and the council know about that. And as we obtain additional information, we will also share that with the council. I also wanted to make sure that you're aware that if they had any possible changes that they may want to make that may impact our residents or our wildlife or any other environmental impacts. We may need to hire a lobbyist to represent our interests. And where I worked previously, Scottsdale was trying to get the Phoenix Sky Harbor to change their flight paths because of Scottsdale Air Park was getting a lot bigger aircraft, and they were not able to go shoot straight up in the air because it was in Phoenix's Sky Harbor's commercial airspace. So we ended up having some really good luck helping mitigate that through a lobbyist. So we will come back at a later date as we have more information. That's all I have on this. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but there's not a whole lot of information at this point.
I just had a question for the council. Do you guys remember John?
Yes.
Wyatt Skies?
Right.
So he was a gentleman who was active here years ago. Don Quixote may have been his, his business model, but it was a visible and audible campaign, and he may, you may hear from him with this revelation.
It's, it's Hepner?
Hepner.
Yeah, he went this effort. After he had a helicopter crash facing to his property.
I'd be shocked if we didn't hear from him.
Is that what it was?
That's when it's.
He gets the prize for.
Yeah, Valentine's Day on 2010 is when the helicopter crashed in the Wash, south of Highland. Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hepner was on the, I believe he's on the committee that helped incorporate Spurcross. Cave Creek.
Right.
That's good. Thank you.
Convinced the town to invest $25,000 and Carefree to fight the battle.
This detail, you can do a podcast.
There's still, there's still stars in the wash where that, where that helicopter went down.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, just a comment. I have the advantage of my own personal aeronautical software engineer at home who is on the FAA website quite a bit, and he found some maps and documents that were more detailed than what was in the packet that you sent us.
Thank you.
And it looked like the projected routes that are currently departures and arrivals primarily to Sky Harbor and Deer Valley do not significantly change over the Cave Creek area. There is one T route that was kind of the orange dotted route that looks like a transit route out of Tucson that would be very high in altitude and probably would not impact anything here. There is an additional map that's a concept map for the future that would send more east departures further east before they go north and south, and the greater impact there would be Fountain Hills.
I see. Okay.
But I'd be happy to share those specific website pages with you.
I'd appreciate that.
And again, I think for residents, the impact from aviation is the lower-flying helicopters, some of the lower-flying planes that come out of Sky Ranch. The helicopters are what spooked my horse. You know, so those are considerations.
How come they didn't mention Sky Ranch in this?
Too small.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a number of these residential air parks, you know, where you, you live and you have a a hangar, and there's one in Chandler, and there's a few others in the valley. But they only were looking at the small general aviation airports, which there's, I think, nine and Sky Harbor is the major one.
Those are airports that have control towers and radar units.
Thank you. Well, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for your homage. We'll move on to the quarterly utility department report.
I always look forward to the quarterly filibuster.
That's the word of the night.
Mayor and council with that warm welcome.
Yeah. We love you, Sean. The rest of us.
Well, as Ty Cobb used to say, you may not win the game, but will win the fight after the game.
I take it in good, 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 good steed. If you're thinking about me, that's a good thing, son. So just going to highlight the performance measures so that we have actually been set, the six performance measures. I'm going to talk about the first five tonight. So I won't spend too much time on the slide. The monitoring and septic systems, we'll do actually the next update. So that's where we've been looking at, where we've been seeing it's like getting requests for new septic systems, and we're seeing repairs on septic systems. But we'll have a chart for you on the next one. So I have slides for the, the first five, which is really dealing with the cost of production and water consumption and water loss in the system. So, and apologizing in advance, usually we're trying to get these slides out to you as part of the package. You guys have time to review it, and it wasn't done. We're just, we're short-staffed. And I actually wanted, before I keep going tonight, just point out that Nick Larson sadly has moved on as our deputy director. He's with us almost just over two years, done a great job, really helped us out. But he's actually taking the general manager position in Cave Creek Water. So today was his official last full day with the town. He's actually still going to be around for another couple of weeks just to help us out, clean some stuff up. But he's actually starting in Carefree in his duties tomorrow. So, but he'll be coming back for some half-days in the next two weeks to help me sort some other stuff out. But yeah, Nick has moved on sadly. So we'll have a recruitment for him. We still have our active recruitment for the civil engineer position. So we have a couple of vacancies going on. That's again, part of the reason for the delays in getting the presentation out is me. So I'll, I take that on. Water production is something that we take very seriously. We look at our budgets, you know, and how much do the costs produce water for our customers? Because that leads into what we have to charge for rates. So we have a comparison of our fiscal years 24 and 25 here. You can see that our costs for, the top is Cave Creek Water dropped a little bit. We were being a little more efficient with the systems, and Desert Hills dropped. Desert Hills actually dropped in fiscal year 25. We were able to work on utilization, utilizing, utilizing the well production a little bit more, so we didn't have to transfer as much to the interconnect site. Sadly, right after the end of the fiscal year, then we had the failure of the two wells in Desert Hills, which required us actually then to send more treated CAP water over to Desert Hills, which, so the next time we show this chart to you, when you see the fiscal year 26, it'll have a bump up because of that need to transmit water. The one good thing we did learn about that exercise of having the wells down, besides adding to my, my stress level greatly, was that we were able to run the system without the Joy Ranch system online and two of the wells down because of the improvements we made at the 24th and Cloud interconnect site. We were able to get the water in there. It did have an impact on moving more water and pressure swings in the cloud road water line, which really has pushed up in my mind, the need to actually get that second connections out to Desert Hills if, if the system stays in, you know, intact. But it was good for us to go through, and we were able to go through what was a very harrowing few months of getting the wells back in operation. The wastewater system, the number has increased, and that was largely because in FY, last fiscal year 25, we actually increased the staffing. Council gave us the additional body to help out. So we've been struggling with running both the treatment plant and the collection system, also small system. The, you know, the divider there, 1,000 gallons, we only have 950 customers on that system. So it's a small system, so it's expensive. But it's actually a difficult one to sometimes maintain because we have the three lift stations, the work that we have on the lift stations, the the ragging that we have on the lift stations, there's constant, constant maintenance on those lift stations, and just getting into the collection systems, working with our, our own staff and then contractors to do things like repairs on the system. So note there is a bump up. We're trying to get that stabilized and get to the proper funding necessary to run that system correctly. Water consumption, we do this on a calendar year basis. I apologize if I flip from left to right to right to left as far as the years on this one. And we do this based on calendar years. We're not done our current calendar year. That allows us to tie it back to our ADWR annual reporting. In effect, what I'm seeing from this graphic is, you know, it's, it's hard. We've been fairly stable. What we actually need to do is get more proactive in our conservation efforts and get people going. So from 22 to 24, there's, you know, some jumps. I know calendar year 24, actually, we had a long hot summer that contributed to a little bit of a bump in some, some increases. But in general, I'm looking at this trend, I'd say we've been fairly flat. And then we just need to still really work on conservation on the system overall. But this sort of sets us the groundwork that we can work from. We actually are starting to see the realization in this calendar year of the replacement of the meters in Cave Creek. So that'll, that'll help us as we move forward in getting a better, true, accurate number, because we did replace the majority of the Cave Creek meters were done this year of the 2,400, 2,500, by 1,600 were done from February through July of this year. So the next year, we'll see that, how that impacts those numbers. But I think we have a good baseline to work with and how to improve. For water losses, we usually think of revenue versus non-revenue water. That's sort of an acronym we're using in the system to, to highlight, you know, do we, are we accounting for where the water is going? And we use the the way that ADWR actually helps us track it annually. So the green bar on the top here, this is for Cave Creek. That's our Cave Creekers. Right now, we only have CAP water in Cave Creek. The green line is the amount of Cave Creek water delivered per month. And then the stack below it is the, the, where it's going to, the orange at the bottom is to the Cave Creek customers. The red above that is the interconnect at 24th and Cloud where we send water to Desert Hills. And then we have the water, CAP water, raw CAP water, we're sending to the Ranch in Minyana golf course, because we have to augment the amount of effluent we generate does not suffice. What I'll point out is actually in September, you'll see that, A, there was no deliveries to Ranch in Minyana, it's because we had some monsoon storms which precluded that. But at the same time, in September, you can see a bump up in the amount of water going to Desert Hills. That was because the wells were down during September. That's when that failure started. And you can see the decrease in the Cave Creek customer demands. That was again, coming from monsoon storms. So we were seeing a drop in irrigation demands in September. So it all sort of trends logically with what happens. Overall, we're getting really close. Per the fifth management plan for the Phoenix active management area, which we're a part of, set by Arizona Department of Resources, a long, long mouthful there. We're supposed to be at 10%. Since I've been here, we've been as high as 15%. So we are getting close. We're at 10.77 of the rolling average. So we're getting down to that. And I think with the meter changeouts that we've done this year, we'll get down to that 10% level, which is, it's, it's not punitive in the fact that they, they we don't get fined if we're not at that level. That's the prescribed level. We actually have to tell them why we're not at that level regulatorily, but it's something we want to aim for because obviously any losses in the system is something we want to reduce. And one of the, the components of the water losses is just the, the flushing of the system that we do. So we actually don't consider it as part of the revenue water system, but this is part of the losses that we have in the system. So Cave Creek, as I've pointed out, I think every time I'm up here, has a lot of long dead-end lines in the system. So to stay compliant with water quality regulations, we have, I have to do a lot of flushing of some of our dead-end lines, like the 12-inch lineups for Crossroad, and we have some other areas that we have to flush out. So we have to make sure that we can maintain water age, which helps with water quality in the system. So we have a pretty good aggressive program. The staff know where they need to go to, but we do have to send a fair amount of water out, out at the extreme ends of the system to keep us in compliance. Overall, we're less than 1%, or 10%, 2%, and that's actually gone down a little bit. We are, I think the last time I presented this to you, I said 1.8. So it has gone down a little bit.
Is there some way we could put some kind of French drains or cofferdams in with the French drain to try to at least get that back into the water table that we can pull out later?
And we've talked about it before. Yeah, it's something we could, we could look at, you know, really with the staff resources we have, we have to do a little project to have someone come out and work on that. And we'd probably have to work through a permit process to get them permitted. So it's probably worth us pursuing further. I know Hal's, Hal's in the back there. He's very good with that, that type of systems for drainage. So we have to see how, what permits would be required for us. It wouldn't be a recharge facility for us, but as you're saying, I think it's just.
It's just, it's back in the water table and helps our water table.
Yeah. Can I charge for that? No.
I think the venting that you're doing up at Spurcross now, at the, the place where you just see over toward the greenhouse, that's going down now into down towards Spurcross Road. And I think that probably would be going into our aquifer.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, so the top end of Spurcross, again, Spurcross is a challenge for us because there was a 12-inch line that was put up Schoolhouse across Slumming Springs and then up Spurcross. That was for development that was planned actually before the town actually secured the open space up there. So there was a large community with two golf courses, I think 600 plus homes planned. So the the Cave Creek Private Water Company actually put that 12-inch line to feed that development. And then when the development went away, we were left at that piece of infrastructure to deal with. So that is one of the challenging areas of the system because there is not enough demand up in that area.
Is there a way to put a smaller sleeve in that?
We thought about that, and it's probably worth us pursuing it. There are some direct connections along it, so we'll have to map that out. So we'd have to, you know, it is a 12-inch line, so we could run up there. We'd have to do all the interconnects and something we do to start at the bottom and probably start at the top and work our way down to, to, to lower the diameter of that. That is something that's probably worth us looking at. We could maybe pull through something like an HDP pipe. And then, but every location where we have a service, tap into it. We're going to have to stop and do that and open it up. And then every time we have a crossover. So there's probably from Slumming Springs north, north, I actually just looked at this the other day. I think there's probably 35 to 40 connection points that we'd have to deal with along that, that section. So it wouldn't be, it, it it'd have some cost to it, but we have to weigh that against the water loss. And then it would help us reduce our water losses by having smaller pipe. It's not less, because then the system demand could, could utilize it. So something worth us looking at. It's not, we didn't. It's not, we didn't go into that in master plan, but I think it is something worth us looking at. We just have to figure out how we could do it, maybe do it in segments and work from north to south in the system. But yeah, it's actually something ironic. We just, I was speaking with someone last week on. Desert Hills has always been a little bit better for its revenue versus non-revenue water losses, just because a couple of things is, A, they, we changed out the meters a while ago. Also we've had better metering in the system itself. And then Desert Hills, just the system itself, because it's the well water actually requires less flushing of the system. And then we have better control over where the waters are coming in. We don't have the, the treatment losses, which we do attribute 5% of the Cave Creek treatment losses that are being, of the water being sent to Desert Hills to them. We did that in 2022. So they actually have a treatment and transmission loss added to that, even adding that in. So that has increased there. There used to be around six or seven percent. Now they're just under 10% of demand out there, but that's just a fact of life. And it's just, we've actually had to, in September, to do more aggressive flushing out there because we were sending more truded CAP water into their system to help make up for the demand production that we lost with the wells being down. That then led to a water quality issue out there that we had to do more aggressive flushing. So it's actually started, I think in July, we saw some stuff out there too. We were seeing some weird numbers in July and I think the wells didn't go down till August, if I remember correctly. But we actually, we get fairly aggressive with our distribution losses. But in overall, when you're seeing that chart in July, that's only 30,000 gallons. So it's, it's smaller than Cave Creek and it's only 0.5%. So it's, it's less than a quarter of what we typically see in, in Cave Creek, just because of the well water. That well water actually can stay in the pipes longer with the chlorine disinfection and not form disinfected byproducts. That's really what we're flushing out, the TTHMs that form in the system and to get, keep the water moving. So Desert Hills ironically has more smaller diameter pipes than Cave Creek. So it's actually a little bit easier to run at that standpoint. It's more, it's actually more six inch than eight inch out in Desert Hills. Where in Cave Creek, we do have some of the larger 12 and 16 inches in the distribution system we work with. So I just want to move on to some capital project updates. I just want to keep council informed on what's going on with the interconnect site. So we're making very good progress out there. You'll see the electrical building, the vertical turbine pumps are actually installed. If you've driven by the site, you might see them popping up, all six of the pumps. We have some spares, but they're actually installed with motors on them. And the hydrostatic tanks, since this site will feed into pressure zone one and pressure zone four, we actually have two separate hydro pneumatic tanks, which actually do provide for some buffering of the system, which is something we don't currently have. So that actually will help the system work a little more functionally. We're on track to complete by the summer. We may actually beat the current schedule, which was June. We've actually, the contractor received some equipment. We, the electrical equipment was really was delaying everything. Unexpectedly, they got some of the drives that what's called the VFDs, the variable frequency drives that power the pumps came in two months early. Actually, we were shocked. They just showed up one day on the site. It's like, okay, what's, we're happy to see this here. So we're still waiting on the main switchboard panel. That's the last piece of major equipment. But we're hopeful that that will be released here. So I think we've hit a good production schedule or some of our stuff is getting accelerated. We're still working with APS to get the transformer, the transformer is set. They just need to energize it and we're just working through the details on that. City of Phoenix is still working on their booster station improvements and more so the lone mountain water line. So they've completed a lot of their work on the, in Cave Creek Road, including just recently, they had the upset at, at Carefree Highway in the south side of, of Cave Creek Road, or Carefree Highways on Cave Creek Road. Where they actually had to cut in the new, what's going to be the new isolation valve between the systems. They did that work in intersection right after that. They followed it up by doing the mill and overlay of Cave Creek Road. So that was actually guarding construction, working for Phoenix. They did the water line improvements were part of Phoenix's scope of work and then the, the pavement improvements were something the town paid for while they were out there. But they're behind schedule on their lone mountain water line. So I have them down for a couple of weeks. I believe they were starting to get mobilized down there. So I will be coming back with an IGA extension. The current IGA we have with Phoenix, they were asking to be done, they were supposed to be done by the end of February. It looks like they'll be done by June right now. So right now they're tracking about the same as us, but since our, our schedule's pulling up, we're trying to see how we can combine it together and how we can start this site up sooner. If I can start it before the summer of next year, I'd like to and get it operational, working in the system. It's dependent on Phoenix's work getting done too. And, and what they'll allow us to, to move out of the pipeline. But we're getting all coordinated for you and yeah, the project is making a really good headway, I think. Other things on the capital side, again, we've been in a little bit of a pause. We've had some financial, you had in the last meeting, you've got the, a majority of the, the projects in the capital program. Besides the interconnect, actually had to wait on getting the project funding put in place. That's the same case on the wastewater side. But now we have the money in place to continue with the well rehabilitation. We've tested three of the wells. We actually have a report on the water quality recommendations, but one of the things we're still working on is just the location and, and the connectivity of the well lines through the town core. So we are working on that, but now we have, since the funds are available, we're going to start getting scoping on getting the, the pumps, motors and electrical components put together. So we can probably bring that back, whether or not we have to come back to council or we can do it under the manager's authority. We'll figure that out. Based on what we saw when we replaced the pumps out in Desert Hills, I'm pretty, thinking it's not going to be that much to, to equip these. But we gotta do them properly to get the three, these three sites back into operation and producing water. It's just the trick we're having is there's never been any maps done of the well line that was constructed by Cave Creek, the private Cave Creek Water System. So we're trying to investigate and figure out what they put in the ground. The only well that's ever been operational since the town bought the system was the Vermish Well. So we know that leg across Cave Creek Road, but the Linda Line, we're not sure if there's a valve that isolates it. So we're actually having to do some testing there. And then the triangle well, which comes across Grapevine and then down Basin Road, that one's an anomaly. We've been potholing around the site. We can't find where the pipe ends and where it ties together. So it's been a bit of a struggle for us. So like one, a lot, a lot of things we do in the town, lack of mapping and information is, is very difficult, makes it very difficult for staff. We do have two projects that were, with now funding's in place, we'll, we'll get out and get bid, the 38th Street Booster Station Upgrade. That was to replace the single pump out there with a dual pump station and allow for, if we can afford it, a fire pump on that booster station. And the Pressure Zone Nine Booster Station, that's the one that we actually have an IGA in place with the developer. And he's actually put money into an escrow account. So we'll get both of those bid here. Because of equipment deliveries, we're expecting both of those will probably take about a year to complete. But we thought by bidding them together, we'll get better pricing for the town. They're not that large of sites, but getting them together would help us get some bidding efficiency. We also have another project on capital, which is our Third Avenue Joy Ranch Reservoir Site. So we've been holding off and getting, starting the reservoir rehabilitation work in Desert Hills. This is the first one. So we, we're gearing up to complete the design. We'll bid it during the summer and then get construction going next fall with this one. Cause I think actually we just have money to complete the design this year. Operationally, because of the well failure that we did have, we did realize we can operate the Desert Hill system with this site off. Cause we actually did that while the wells were out of service. So we get, we can give a bigger window for the contractors to complete their work at that site. So they're going in, they're rehabilitating the tank itself and we're doing some piping modifications at the site to make it more efficient. These recommendations that date all the way back to 2015 to keep that site operational. Waste water side, we have a project to repair the Chipporosa Lift Station. That's the oldest of our, in the smallest, but the oldest of our three lift stations. So we're doing some work out there to clean that site up, add an emergency pump bump bypass that we currently don't have. The other two sites we've retrofitted with it. And we're going to update the valve vault at that site and do some other modifications. The pumps are in good shape, but it's just the interior piping and then that wet well is not coated. So we have to do some work on the wet well itself. We have repairs to the Ranch Minana Lift Station. So sadly, I've, looking back, it's been four years since we've had an overflow at Ranch Minana Lift Station. We had one this summer during the monsoon storms. We, after looking into the root cause, it was actually two competing, two issues that added to that. A, the pump performance had dropped off, the impellers in that lift station, we changed out the pumps in 21. And actually we've had really good service since 21, but something happened in the spring to damage the impellers of both pumps. So one of them is actually out for service right now. We've, we determined that largely by putting in the spare pump back in its spot. And we gained 100 gallons per minute of flow at the site by doing that. So the, one of the two original pumps is out for service. The second one we'll get, once that's back in, we'll get the second one out. So we'll have three good pumps again. And the other was a blockage in the force main. You know, sadly, just over two years ago, we had a collapse on this force main down at the intersection of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road. Now we saw a blockage has occurred. So we saw pressures rising since the spring. We didn't know what was going on. We thought it's a pump performance, but it's actually, it was both, we had both things happening. The pump performance was decreasing and there was a blockage in the force main that was holding up pressure, which caused the pumps to actually lose performance too. So we think we have it narrowed down to about a 1500 foot section of the line. Sadly, it's this 1500 foot section in front of Lowe's from the Phoenix Interconnect Site down to the intersection. We're actually trying to get a contract together. We actually have a scope of work. It was actually in the, the capital program to do an assessment and cleaning of the force mains. We're trying to get what's called an inspection ball. It's an inch and a half diameter ball that they'll put into the force main, run down there and it'll give us information. And it'll help us find where there's debris, because that's based on the pressure in the line. It can listen to see where there's air pockets and it can actually do some investigation of the pipe itself to tell us whether or not we've lost the pipe. I, after what we've been doing operationally the last couple of months, I don't think we've lost the pipe, but I won't know for sure until we get inside of it. I think it's just a buildup of debris that's occurred and we got to figure out how to get up. And the reason I say that is because when we put in our spare pump into the site, we did a long runtime. We actually ran a fire hose over it and ran for about an hour with the new pump in sight. And we lowered the pressure. So we moved whatever was that blockage was around and actually opened the, the port up a little bit more. So we reduced the pressures of the site. So it makes me think it's, it's, it's a debris clogage rather than a pipe collapse, but we won't know for sure until that inspection's done. We're hoping to get that done before the end of December with a contractor. And then we'll actually also do the other two force mains to the Chipporosa and the, and the, the stagecoach lift station at the same time. We'll be kicking off, because we have funding, the manhole rehabilitation work. Last time we focused a lot on the manholes bases in Cave Creek Road. We actually helped us a lot because it helped the flow through there and actually helps for cleaning operations. We might go back into and we'll investigate whether we need to go back into the washes or where we prioritize that. That's just an ongoing work that we just need to get into doing that. And we do have money to do collection system improvement. So we're completing a project across the way by Ranch Minana where we have a wash crossing. So we'll have to figure that out. Holding off on the collection systems a little bit until we find out what's going on with the Ranch Minana Force Main. That was scary. And when the collapse occurred two years ago, that consumed $350,000 in a week and a half's work, work just to do that repair. So I'm very nervous about going into this. So we might hold off on the manholes. I had to keep working on those, but the collection system might just go right back into the Ranch Minana list, force main. Once we figure out what the, what the issue is, but hopefully by the next report, I can give you an update that we're done with that work, but knock on wood. Development projects are keeping us very busy. They require a lot of staff time to get through. And one of the struggles we have is just the existing system. We, it, it seems like for some ironic reason, for last year, year and a half, a lot of the development projects have been in areas where we don't have the best mapping. So we spent a lot of time trying to figure out still what's going on. In one case, we actually have a line across the, in Cave Creek Road, just across from Town Hall, where we were trying to activate the old water meter for the Lelands, which is now being redeveloped. And we found out that the, we believe, and after talking with old staff members, that the eight inch line that the, the water meter was tied onto is dead. So we're trying to find, we believe there's another live line out there and we're trying to find it. This is a challenge. We've actually been into Cave Creek Road. We've actually potholed down to the main. We've actually seen that the service line has no obstructions in it, because we ran a fish tape all the way down the service line. The corp stops fully on. But, and after talking to my staff, they said, oh yeah, there's an old deadline out there, but no one ever marked it down. So now we're struggling with that. We believe there's another line on the east side of the road, just outside edge of pavement. So now we have to try and find it. So that's some of our struggles and it comes a lot at the front end to do this. We try to do as much as we can when development projects come through, so we can identify clearly what needs to be done. My case of this, we thought no one had any indication except the previous staff, who once we reached out, they, they, they mentioned to us that the line had been abandoned years ago. So that becomes a challenge for us. Some larger projects that we have worked on, Focus of the Family, that actually project did do an improvement on Schoolhouse Road. It actually, working with them, they allowed us to replace a section of four inch galvanized line. It was a dead end, four inch galvanized line. Now we've created a loop down to Military Way and we actually, the town didn't complete that and ran the line south of Military Way and got to a new, uh, uh, location where we have a six inch loop. So that was an improvement in the system. Cava Springs, I've talked to you a lot about that. We've updated the development agreement for that in the last, in this timeframe of this. And Galloway Crossing Apartments, we've actually had them install two Ts with isolation valves on Galloway Drive. That's important I bring it forward, just because in the past, there's been a lot of work done and there's always been a fear of shutting down the water system to allow people to cut in new Ts and valves, instead of doing a direct tap into line, but cutting in a T, you need to depressurize the system, allow the contractor to do the work. But a lot of our cases, we can't isolate the system because we don't have the proper inline isolation valves. We probably work when developers come through to make the improvements. So we don't have to do it all ourselves. And now we have two good locations in that area that helps us isolate and, and loop the system better. So helps operationally by working with that. It did require us doing overnight work and working with the contractor, but we got that done. Water resources is something that's consuming a lot of our time right now, and I think rightfully so. So we still are facing cuts to the Colorado River come January of 2027. We're using 25% as the number. I've heard it may only be 20%, but nothing's for sure. And that's just to our municipal and industrial water supply. So again, if you remember our CAP subcontracts, we have two. The municipal and industrial is more secure and that's the one that we think is going to be cut. Then the town also did secure some non-Indian agricultural CAP rights about five years ago. And we've been able to utilize some of that and actually we've been using a lot of that just to put excess water in the ground to generate long-term storage credits. For next year, we cannot order any NAA water. We've, for the first few years, we, we had that subcontract, we were able to order 75% of our volume. This next year they said zero. So, and pending the cuts that are coming, that's going to fluctuate up and down. It does give us some value and this gives us capacity in the cap canal. And that's what makes things like the Harkahela Project something that worth considering, because we actually have capacity. But it's a, it's a, it was a real kick in the pants, because we were trying to get as much water put in the ground to help generate storage credits, so that we can work on our agreements to actually work with other agencies to get that withdrawn, to help us get through the first three to five years of the pending shortages. But, so we've lost a little bit of our, our momentum for next year. So the, the, the short midterm strategies, that's the three to five years. And I should take off long-term on that. Apologize that. That's, that's just getting working access to our storage credits. So we actually do have recharge credits in the Our Freea Facility, which is down in the Our Freea River Bottom by Happy Valley Road. And the Hieroglyphics Facility, which is 163rd Avenue, north of Grand Avenue. It's actually directly north of the Cap Canal. So that's where most of our credits are, are in place. So we're really close to coming back to council with the first of the agreements with the, the agencies out in the West Valley, who are willing to participate with us to, to have us help them and for a fee, allow, they'll use our credits in their system and allow effectively CAP water to come down to our outtake. So it'll give us access to our storage credits. So it's a great thing for us to have that storage account. And that will, I think, help us weather the first few years of the, the pending cuts. We are still working on getting the Cave Creek Wells reactivated, which will get us access, access to some of the groundwater that we have not been utilizing. Again, long-term, we don't know how viable that is, because the old water company stopped using those wells for, for water volume and water quality issues. And that's why they transitioned to surface water and the CAP pipeline, but it's still worth us having as a, as a backup lifeline for the system. And then that allows us to work on our longer term strategies. You know, we are still participating in the Bartlet Dam Project. That's working through its environmental assessment strategy. We had requested a thousand acre feet of storage. The way they're calculating it, on, on the average, average, we have, it's a 3.5 multiplier or divider. So with a thousand acre feet of storage behind the new dam, that will give us an average annual yield of, of 286 acre feet of, of, of water. That water can be used to back up our existing water supplies. The project is moving forward. The, they finally have been notified by the Bureau of Reclamation, the federal government, that the federal government is looking to receive half the water generated by the project. Up to this point, there's been a cost sharing mechanism. The Bureau of Reclamation has actually paid for the half of the feasibility study and half the environmental assessments, but they never came back formally and asked for the water. Now they have asked for the water. The impact to Cave Creek is, is not, is, is nothing directly to us, because they had to do a reallocation of all the participant partners. There's 2024, I think, including us. So it's really the larger elements like Phoenix, they've, they're going to lose about a third of the water resources that they requested because they're reallocating it. So again, the federal government wasn't, they notified the project team recently that they wanted 50% of the water. So now they're reallocating it between the different members. It's still an expensive project. The last cost assessment was $3.7 billion and that's what they're moving forward with. So. And then the thought being that federal government's going to pick up half of that and get half the water resources and the rest of it will be distributed amongst the members if we stay into that. So we still have a couple of years to make that final decision. It's working through the process.
What is the federal government going to do with half of that water?
They're using it to actually back up their, things like they have non-Indian agricultural CAP contracts. So they're using it to back up their existing contracts that they have with things like Indian agencies.
Indian tribes.
Indian tribes is what they told us.
Who gets it.
So, yeah. And then we also have, and like I mentioned earlier tonight, the purchase of the 500 acre feet of Harkahela Valley Water. We are looking into that project. We do have our earnest money in place, our escrow money in place. And it's, yeah, something we're, we're looking at very seriously. And it's, yeah, something we're, we're looking at very seriously. Like anything, it's, it's, it's very scary when you look at these numbers. But you know, we need to move forward with something, you know, if, if the short midterm long solutions help us bridge a gap, maybe we can defer some stuff. But right now, Harkahela is looking like a good project, but we haven't got all the information together to brief council. We were supposed to be getting a briefing and I know I'm jumping ahead a little bit, because this is supposed to be for the past quarter. Is that we're supposed to be getting a briefing by the agency that was going to be doing the withdrawal treatment of that this, this Friday, Thursday. But they've deferred that for another month. So we've, we're a little bit behind on that, but we will come back with council with a lot more information on this project. We've been gathering a lot more information and I know it's a very serious decision for the town to make. But, and we'll come back and have a lot more discussions with you on that.
Are they going to give us approximate timeline at that point too?
Well, yeah, so the timeline, you know, again, there's a couple of things. So we've submitted some permit applications. The, the, the approximate timeline for construction to get actual access to that is probably three years is what they've told me for physical construction. I have been able to see town has executed an NDA in place for both Harkahela Valley Land Users and actually with Epcore. Epcores relayed some information to me about the project details. And yeah, it looks to me, I would suggest it would probably be a, a, a three-year scope of work between design and construction to get to water into the, the canal from this, the time. The good thing is that I think with everything else that we have in place, between getting access to our storage credits, we think we might get access to Arizona Water Banking Authority credits and some other abilities to get some stuff in the system. I think we have time to wait for something like that. It's just, you know, is this the right project? And we'd have to make that decision and we have to bring a lot more information back to council to make that decision. We realize that, so. Within that water resources, water conservation. If we can have our current customers reduce their water demand, that helps stretch out our water resources and helps reduce the amount of water that we need to have. So utility advisory committee's done a lot of work. I was trying to find the Cactus Charlie. I thought it was on the website and I thought it was been released, but you know, we have come up with our mascot, Cactus Charlie. And then we're working, there is money in the operational budgets to start really aggressively the water conservation outreach. And I was thinking of three scope, a scope of work to allow someone to help us with education and outreach, developing of residential landscape audit assistance programs and commercial audit assistance programs. And get people engaged, you know, we don't have staff resources to really jump in and look at all this stuff. So we really need to get augmentation to have people help us out. And you know, as we've gone through things like the rate study, it's come in apparent like things, residential landscaping demand is, is I think one of the easiest things for us to go after and work with customers, but there's things like commercial water, you know, we have some commercial users. They use a lot of water. So if we can help them conserve and then, you know, especially when we're starting to increase the rates significantly like we are and reduce the tiers, top tiers. I think it benefits the town overall to actually help those commercial customers and help overall. It's kind of the dilemma of a water system that we help people save water and actually reduces our revenue. But at the same time, it helps us with our water resources and offsets us having to get new water resources. So, but something that we need to do and we're committed to doing. And we're always ongoing and monitoring regional water resource discussions. Wifa has a water augmentation program. This Thursday, they're actually doing a briefing. They've released that, so that's going to be for allowing for people to submit projects and get funding for that. About almost a year ago, they actually issued a solicitation through Water and Structure Finance Authority to actually get private companies to come in and put proposals into help augment the statewide water resources. So they were evaluating, I think, six proposals, six private sector proposals. They haven't released the details of those projects, but this is actually separate. This is something that we can go after, water augmentation program. So we think if we move forward with something like Bartlett Dam, Harkahela or something else, this is something that we could go after as a way for helping fund. So, so we're going to sit in on Thursday and learn the details of that. They've just finally opened it up. They've had their website open for a while, but with no detail. So this is the first where they're opening up and telling us what's going to happen. And then we actually, well, just fell outside the corridor I'm supposed to be talking about. We, on October 30th, we, we attended a meeting hosted by the Department of Water Resources, Tom Breszewski. And we actually had CAP staff there and the governor's staff there talking about just, it was really the municipal and industrial subcontractors. And just they wanted to have an open discussion as they continue their discussions with the seven basin states. They wanted to make sure that we were in the loop on what was going on. So I think it was good, healthy discussion and I'll relay that actually unbeknownst to me, they actually, Cave Creek got brought up because of the conversations that we have had with them, our mayor and vice mayor, and the letters that we've sent out to these agencies. While they were talking about who's going to be hit by these cuts, they mentioned Cave Creek and I happened to be sitting off their side. They didn't know I was there, so I stepped forward and said, yeah, thank you for mentioning me. I'm sad that you're mentioning me, but I'm glad that you, you heard our conversation that because we're so dependent on the CAP water supplies, the agencies involved in towns, the statewide water resources are aware of our plight and they're, they're helping us and it's helping the conversation. So out of that meeting, we actually spoke to a couple of other agencies. They didn't know what we were dealing with and they were appreciative of the fact that we were open and honest about it. And they said, how can we help? So just these conversations and the relationships, you know, Cave Creek itself is a small agency. Us being involved in these statewide things has opened up some doors that I don't think we would have ever had before. And I appreciate that and things like Michelle Van Fossen and Brad Hill, who have really helped us move forward with some of these efforts. And again, Mayor and Vice Mayor and all the council, anything that we could do again to help. On a happier note, our metering system. I really like this automatic metering infrastructure that we have in place in Cave Creek. So we were picking up some meters in Desert Hills, but it's really, it's the Cave Creek system's been completed. And the one thing that we've been able to roll out to our customers is the MI360. So all of our customers, right now we are a Neptune based system. I think last time that Sherry talked about you, she, she pointed out how much better the metering system. We used to run two systems, an Itron base and Neptune system. It was just, it was really clunky, just really messy. So now we're down to a Neptune system. All consistent meters, it helps with billing system. And now everybody can actually join the MI360. It's only about 60% of our customer base will see more than monthly data out of it. We are encouraging anybody to sign up to the system, because as we convert to meters, we're not sure when the conversions will occur, then you'll see better data. We've had a couple of customers that have logged on and said, well, I'm only seeing monthly. We say, just hang tight, we're working on it and get used to the system. But right now we have 250 customers that have signed up for it. This is a system that allows people to get alerts from it. And we actually have found some unique things in that sometimes the customers are getting alerts before we see it in the overall system. When we log into it, we see everybody's, it's all combined together, but they're getting more accurate, more consistent data than we are when we start looking at the backend of it. So it's been neat, because they've seen stuff and they called us up and said, well, I haven't seen that. Oh, an hour later I see it and they've already seen it. So, but it allows people to set usage alerts. Again, if you're on the monthly system, you can set your monthly value. So if you go over, as soon as we read the number, drew our drive-by readings, get it uploaded to the cloud, you'll get notification if you've exceeded that. And, and you don't have to wait the two to three weeks before you get that bill from me that says, oh, you've exceeded it. They're getting that information earlier. And if you're, if you're lucky and have the AMI conversion right now, the 60% of our customer base, you can get up to hourly information on your system. You can set things like daily and hourly thresholds on your system to help really look at conservation. We're still working and council did authorize the, the IGA with City Phoenix for the, the collector site at Mount Gillon. That's the one at the base of Seventh, Seventh Avenue, South of Carefree Highway in the Phoenix Preserve up there. So on the Radio Tower site. So I'm still waiting to hear back from Phoenix on their getting it on their council and getting the IGA site on their side. And once that's done, we'll actually be able to go purchase that collector site. Part of that was getting the capital program in place that allows us to buy that collector set, which we think will help pick up, start picking up a lot of Desert Hills meters and it'll actually also back up the Cave Creek side of the system too, because we're actually pointing both directions. We have one on our Carriage Booster on the side of Black Mountain. We have the Mount Gillon site actually coming in and listening for the meters. So it'll help the system. And we still have ongoing compliance issues we deal with. I haven't talked to you a lot about lead service line inventory recently, so I thought I'd give you a quick update. That was something that was mandated a few years ago, that the EPA had requested agencies be responsible for both the private side of the meter, our service lines to the meter and the homes. They made us responsible for the home service line from the meter to the house to actually do that. So we went through the exercise and it's something that actually Nick spent a lot of time on and it really helped us out. So last year we had to complete the initial inventory and getting the letters out to customers who we were unsure of the service material. We did that largely based on the age of them. There's sort of a timeframe, I think it was mid seventies, late seventies where lead was outlawed. So we were able to do it and their EPA allowed us to do it just on beige age. So we did that, we sent out the letters last year. We've still considered to refine that database. Right now there's 488 services in Cave Creek that were questionable. So we've been able to contract with a subcontractor who was doing the work to change out the meters. They're going back and doing a second exercise. They're in the midst of it right now and they're actually digging up. So within 18 inches of the meter, they're digging two holes in effect, one on our side and one on the customer side to verify the material. And that's creating the inventory that allows us, what we've heard from ADQ, Arizona Department of Quality, that that will suffice to meet the EPA standards. EPA hasn't agreed to that. So most agencies are doing it this way. We're getting that and we're going to upload it into their data set. So we hope the 488 services in Cave Creek will be done within the month and then our staff will take on, there's only 31 services in Desert Hills that we still need to investigate. We'll upload that information and hopefully that suffices. We'll have to send out a letter to these customers that we found out what the material is. The only unknown is that the original EPA mandate was to say we had to go within 18 inches of the building connection point. But that we've, there's competing direction right now, so we'll get this inventory out. We may still have to go back and still go on the private property to do another hole in effect to verify the material buried. Now they don't want you to do it visually on what you see. They want you to go back 18 inches from the building foundation and dig it up. We're hopeful we can avoid that. So, but we still need to get this exercise done. So again, within another month, we should be done in Cave Creek. Probably with staff resources, it'll probably be sometime in January, February, we'll, we'll be done with Desert Hills and we can get that information uploaded. So, but if you hear from constituents, what we're doing, we're just trying to get through the database portion of it. We have not found any lead service lines that we're concerned about, but it's something we have to go through. And then I haven't talked about PFAS for a while, Forever Chemicals. So we were just actually talking with Ryan and we got some information on that. So they're, the EPA is looking to develop new standards on PFAS. There, both systems, Cave Creek and Desert Hills has been tested. We've actually gone through multiple rounds on both systems. Everything was a non-detect, which basically meant that their, the devices that they have could not read anything on the constituents. And there's regulated PFAS and there's the unregulated. So what they're trying to do is actually collect information on the unregulated to actually set new limits. Is really what they're, they're doing is what we understand right now. But everything in Cave Creek and Desert Hills came back non-detect. So effectively the instruments couldn't even report it for the system, except for lithium. And that's, that's one currently, there's no regulated limit on it. And it's, we're talking parts per million, or parts per billion. I think it is actually what we found in lithium, but both systems did have a detection in lithium or report, they, they could record something in lithium. It's not something that we're concerned with right now, because they haven't have a standard, but I just figured I'd report that to you. But again, PFAS is something, it hasn't gone away. The EPA is still looking at the regulations. I think it has slowed down a little bit, but we were successful and got good test results on both systems. So with that, I think I've talked enough and I'll take any questions council may have.
Questions? Cynthia?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on the timeline for activating the wells, the Cave Creek wells. Is your timeline solid or is that going to take more time for the line testing?
You know, of the three sites, the run that we're going to really focus on is the right well, which is at the water treatment plant site. There's actually electrical circuit there already and we can tie that back in. That one, we do know the well line's right outside the site wall. And it's part of the work that MGC is doing to actually do the interconnect to allow the Phoenix water to go into the nearby site. They're going to be connect, doing a connection for us. So that one, I'm just going to get the contractor to do a bid on it and get the well pump and motor and then the electrical gears scheduled. So that one should be probably coming online, I think, within probably less than six months. And we can get that one function operational. Tying that into the feed line to the pole trailers is, is going to be the trick. And I think we might have to work on a permit modification with Miracle Park County. At the same time, we're doing the permit modification overall for the plant. So I'm cautious of that, but at least getting it tied into the well line and then running it and testing the water quality for extended periods and the qual, quantity of water we can get out of that well. The other two are the one at Spur Cross and Grapevine. And then there's the Linda well, which is on Linda Drive, just south of Cave Creek Road. Those are the three sites we're looking at. So I think the first one, I think less than six months, I think we can get the first one equipped. And then the other two will follow right after that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions?
Sounds like you need a town archaeologist to help you find some of this stuff.
I need a real stall math staff member that likes crawling in dark spaces, you know, yeah. Yeah, it's a struggle and I feel for the staff, you know, we go out and we're trying to do blue steak and do stuff, but this, this line across the street was a real kick in the butt, back, backside of, there's a service line, we put the meter in the box, we couldn't get, we spent multiple times and we dug into the road and there's a line there. And then, yeah, finally the old staff said, oh yeah, we think that's dead. It's like, thanks.
So other questions, other comments? Okay, thank you, Sean. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting. Hearing none?